Alright, somebody in the audience, let me know if you can hear me. Josie, Tara. Can you guys hear me okay? Alright, awesome, thank you Josie. Before we actually start the meeting, I wanted to reiterate to the public, the meeting is actually streamed on Zoom and then pushed to YouTube. We ran into kind of a minor glitch last time where some people were making some comments on YouTube. And because of the lag that exists between Zoom and YouTube, the YouTube meeting as it's live streamed to YouTube is really a minute, maybe two minutes behind the Zoom meeting. So if anyone is able to make comments or wants to make comments on YouTube, kind of be aware that we're not monitoring YouTube. That's just kind of the secondary platform that this gets streamed to. The meeting is actually taking place in Zoom. So generally speaking, we do our very best to see messages that are sent to us in Zoom. But the YouTube is really just kind of a secondary platform where the videos and the commission meetings are stored after the fact. The meeting actually takes place in Zoom. So comments via YouTube during your live stream are two or three minutes behind the actual proceedings of the meeting and we're not monitoring YouTube live. It's with the lag, it makes it too difficult. I just wanted to clear that up in case any public had any questions or comments about that. And I'll turn it over to Jacques for the meeting.
Alright, thank you very much Quinn. I'll open the July 19 Thompson Springs Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Board Meeting. Present are commissioners Sarah Stock, Evan Clapper, Trish Hadeen, Mary McGann, and myself Jacques Hadler. Also Clerk Gabe Waitek, Associate Commissioner Administrator Quinn Hall, and Commission Coordinator Lisa Oliver. Alright, do we have any citizens to be heard for the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Meeting? Anyone on Zoom? No? Alright, we're up to the approval of minutes.
I move to approve the minutes for June 21st, 2020.
Thank you Mary. Alright, I have a motion by Commissioner McGann, a second by Commissioner Stock. Any discussion on the minutes? Alright, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Actually, I missed Jos- Commissioner Josie Kovach on Zoom when I was... Let me everybody know who's here, and Josie has just voted, so that passes six to nothing. We are now up to ratification of payment of bills. Total Thompson bills, the amount of $284.86. Total Thompson payroll, and the amount of $1,646.88. Total bills and payroll, and the amount of $1,931.74. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you Trish. Second by Mary. Any discussion on payment of bills? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, six to nothing. We are up to... Oh right, I think we have the fire chase report first. We have, we're up to the fire chase report. Is Chief Markham on or has he submitted a report in writing? Doesn't, okay. Okay, it looks like no, so we'll move on to new business. Ratifying the TSSFD 2022 general liability and property application is presented in the packet. Do you guys get a chance to see that?
I move to ratify the application as presented in the packet.
Thank you Mary.
I'll second that.
Alright, I have a motion by Commissioner McGann and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye. Alright, motion passes unanimously. And doesn't look like we have anything else on the Thompson agenda. So I will adjourn the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Board Meeting, July 19. And I will open the regular Grand County Commission Meeting, July 19. Same commissioners and staff present as at the Thompson Springs Meeting. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Alright, citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard for the regular Grand County Commission Meeting? And it looks like there is no one in the room. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to be heard? Looks like no.
Yes, I would.
Alright.
Cecilia Showalter.
Cecilia, did you have something for the general county business, or would you like to be heard during your item on the agenda?
I would like to be heard for my item on the agenda.
Okay, we can, if you would wait until that item comes up, I believe it's our second action item, then we will give you a chance to be heard on that. Would that be okay with you?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard tonight? Alright, we we have no citizens who would like to be heard. It doesn't look like we have any presentations or reports tonight. So we'll move on to the approval of meeting minutes. Alright. Would anyone like to make a motion approving the minutes from the last meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the July 5th, 2022 meeting.
Thank you Trish, a second?
Second.
Alright, motion by Commissioner Hadeen and second by Commissioner McGann. Any discussion of those minutes? Alright, seeing none, I'll call for a vote for the approval of minutes. All those in favor, raise your hand. Alright, looks like that passes unanimously, six to nothing. We're up to commission member disclosures. Does anyone have anything they'd like to disclose about tonight's meeting?
As part of the consent agenda, I work with the American Alpine Club in their fundraising event, the Craig Classic.
Thanks Evan. And I also have something to disclose on item, let's see what that is, on item 11J. I am a close friend and I've worked with the applicant in question there for about 20 years, although I'm not involved at all in the in the item in question. Alright, we are up to...
Hey Jacques, I have a disclosure as well.
I'm sorry Josie, I missed you. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I mean generally and related to special events, I also want to disclose that I am employed by one of the special events organization in town. They are not specifically on the agenda. But the Moab Music Festival is my employer, so any special events discussion, I will disclose that.
Thanks Josie. Alright. More disclosures than usual tonight. We are up to general commission reports and future considerations. And Josie, I'll start with you, so I don't skip you again on Zoom.
Cool, let me pull up my notes. I don't have that much to report, but on the special events topic, I attended the kind of joint special events approval committee and county commission meeting with fellow commissioners, I think Hadeen and Clapper, on July 6th to kind of further discuss how we are shifting our special events approval and also sort of recruitment process, what sort of general philosophies we want, what kind of events we really want to seek in Grand County, how we want to grade criteria of current events and future events, and just generally making the process a lot more explicit, so that the approval committee has very good guidelines. So that is in progress. I I think it's headed in a really good direction. And then on July 14th, I attended another meeting for the land use code steering committee, mostly talking about the workforce housing idea of a camp park or something, some similar verbiage overlay, which might either look like a conditional use or might look like an overlay similar to...
Three, two, one, five. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Hello Cecilia?
Yes, my phone.
So that as well, I'm very excited about making progress on like legitimizing some non-traditional housing for Moab's workforce, and I think there's good progress being made there. And that's pretty much all I've got.
Great, thank you Josie. Sarah?
Um, let's see, I've been working on the 100 Communities Board, which is the Community Renewable Energy Program. And I've talked to Elisa in the planning department, and she's going to be the alternate board member for that, for that board. And I guess the only thing I have there is that it's moving along very quickly and it's it's a very big deal. What did I have it? I think that all of the communities involved represent 25% of Rocky Mountain Power's Utah sales. So that's a quarter of the entire grid is going to go 100% renewable electricity by 2030. Very exciting to be a part of. And I'm going to put together a presentation on a couple different resolutions that we're hoping to move forward by the end of the year. So maybe that will be September or October, but I hope to come to you with graphs and some more like explanations of what the program is going to look like as we try to convince everyone in the community to sign on. And then let's see, I've also attended the weed board meeting, the noxious weed board. They're still looking for seasonal employees, and that brings up this bigger issue where I think many different departments in the county and also other special service districts are really struggling to find seasonal employees. And just throw it up there for food, for thought, I think it'd be interesting to explore if we could come up with some kind of county option for seasonal employees to try to get some of these seasonal tech positions filled, because these are really important jobs. It's mosquito abatement and noxious weed, and right now they have very limited crews. And they keep saying that housing is the main, main factor. So, I don't know. Something to think on. And then I attended with Josie the land use code steering committee meeting regarding the residential camp park overlay, or something like that. And also in that is maybe updating the manufactured home code, so that it's a little bit easier to, to make happen, so that we can start to hopefully replace some of the camp parks that are being pushed out of Moab Central, being updeveloped and have a place for them somewhere in the county in a process, because right now we don't have a process for that. That's all for me.
Thank you Sarah. Evan?
I met with the sand flats steering committee. They're also still hiring for the season, so there's positions available there. We got to watch a lot of the videos that have been produced about sand flats. There's new ones about biological soil crust, potholes coming down the pipe. So that's exciting, and a lot of those are being used in the HB 180 UTV test. So they've kind of edited a lot of our videos we produce locally here and just kind of removed Moab and Grand County from it, replaced with Utah and stuff, but it's nice because that UTV test, it'll be mandatory, has a lot of links, and it's nice that it's kind of been steered a lot locally. So even though it's being used statewide, it's, it's, addresses a lot of our specific issues. And some small updates here is over at the Sand Flats Office downtown here, they're putting in a pollinator garden. So that will help make that a little more attractive over there. Let's see, what else? I also met with, the cemetery district was postponed until our next regular scheduled meeting next month. Nothing besides a few signatures needed from that group. And met with the health district. And things are functioning well there. They I think are pretty close to census and there's some financials with they provide seed money to some other facilities elsewhere in the state, and there was a change of ownership in one of those facilities, and so there was a lot of kind of discussion around financials and budgeting around that, but I think that this body needs, or if you're interested, all that stuff is available in the minutes.
It's very nuanced. That's all for Josh. Thanks Evan. Trish?
Okay, I also went to the special events committee meeting, and I think Josie covered that really well, so I won't go into that, Evan was there also. And I went to a triparte, is that correct, Gabe? Am I saying that correct? Tripartite board. That's another board that I'm on now. And we just talked about resources for mental health, addiction resources, housing resources for the southeastern region. And I went to the Southeastern Utah Association of Local Governments meeting, and the thing that just stood out was the Main Street beautification grants, and I guess when I think of that, I think of like Thompson being a great, you know, so I just might pass that along to you.
Alright.
I think they would be a great recipient of something like that, because that's kind of the direction that they're moving. As far as the planning commission, I won't really talk, we talked quite a bit about the camp park, but you guys kind of took that and ran with it. Much else, I mean Elisa has a lot going on, but we're going to hear about quite a bit of that tonight. I went to the conservation district meeting, and we just, they passed out some money to YGP for their greenhouse and hoop house and the Resiliency Hub, which is really cool. They're doing some gardening, local gardening spaces. They have about 40 plus gardeners that, for their community gardens, and one is up on East Bench Road, and now oh, the one is going to be behind Wabi Sabi, which is kind of cool. So they were looking for the infrastructure for watering of those. And you know, the pollinator thing reminded me, and I want to tell you, I already applied. The Department of Ag has these little pollinator kits. It's right on, if you get on the Utah Department of Ag, it's like the banner that runs across, and you can apply for a little pollinator kit, which is basically seed. So I'll just throw that out. I applied already. I know a lot of you will also. And then I went to the Grand County Local Homeless Council. Right now, as, as of June, there was 144 individuals seeking services. 57 literally homeless in June, which included 12 youth, 28 women and 17 men. And as always, the trend homelessness is on the rise, and imminent homelessness on the rise. So not good news there, but we've seen that for a while. That's it.
Thank you Trish. Mary?
The Economic Development Advisory Board kept me very busy this month. We had a meeting on 11th, 12th, and 13th. We were very, they was good, because we were very fortunate. We had a large number of people apply.
I heard that.
I mean, I think it was 10, maybe 12, you know, so just getting all the interviews done and everything, and many of them. The decision, it was hard to narrow it down to three people took.
So how did you accomplish that, getting all those applicants?
I think a lot of people from the board went out and stirred pot. Beat the street and told them, and I think people are very interested. I think it's a board people are excited about because it's diversifying the economy and the excitement over the grants.
That's cool.
I mean, the grants are really exciting, and people are applying for them, and it looks like it's moving forward, so it's very exciting. So that took a lot of time. I did sit in on the camp meeting with Sarah, and I just wanted to say that you know, I was a fly on the wall, I didn't talk, but I was so impressed with the collaboration and the talking back and forth with, you know, our building inspector, you know, Bill Holtz, and just everybody had so many ideas, and the genuine concern and the desire to do something was palatable. It was really, really a great group of people that are attempting to find a way to help people find housing. On the 11th, I went to the airport board. Tammy Howard was our new director. I'm sure she's going to do a great job. She's very excited, and the staff is happy. There was a Cessna that went off the runway, at the Crosswind Runway. No one was hurt, and the plane wasn't damaged that much. There was another plane, it was, it's considered a crash, although no one was hurt. One, a small wheel dropped off and the wing went over and dragged, and there was no damage to the runway. The pilot was fine, but it did break a $400 runway light, because each one of those lights costs $400. I believe the insurance from the pilot will pay for that. There has been an increase, and you probably have noticed it in the air, there's been quite an increase in the number of armed forces planes landing at our airport. And they, you know, we're not really sure why, but it's been more coming, you know, landing for fueling and such. The staff received our CPR training. And as of last July 15th, the flight to Salt Lake City has resumed. And then I attended the special commission meeting to settle the opioid lawsuit. And then a lot of small meetings and visits. Nothing to report, we're in the process of getting things done. So, thank you.
Alright, thanks Mary. And I've had a, I've been out of town for three weeks and just returned, so I haven't attended anything since our last meeting. But I would like to say I'm on the museum board, and the Museum of Moab is having their annual ice cream social this Sunday, the 24th, from 7 to 9, which is always a great event for the museum. So if anyone can make that, then come out and check that out, and I'll certainly be there with my family. So plug, plug for the museum. Alright, let's have the elected officials. Gabe, I think you're the only one here?
No updates at this time, thank you.
Thanks Gabe. Is, actually, is Christina on yet? Okay, Chris Kaufman's on. Chris, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Nope.
Okay, thank you Chris. We're up to the commission administrator report. Quinn?
I don't have a whole lot to report. We've rolled out a new agenda submission form that seems to be going somewhat smoothly, pretty smooth. And we're excited for that to take hold and keep going. Beyond that, lots of meetings, but most meetings that commissioners have already discussed, so I'll leave it at that.
Alright, thank you. Alright, that means we're moving along, and we're up to general business action items, discussion and consideration of approval. You're right. I'm sorry, Gabe, thanks for reminding me. Ratification of payment of bills.
Nobody caught you.
Gabe caught me.
I meant commissioners.
Alright, we're up to ratification of payment of bills. Total bills, the amount of $1,082,687.91. Total payroll, and the amount of $642,542.88. Total bills and payroll, and the amount of $1,725,230.79. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thanks Evan. Second?
Second.
Alright, I have a motion by Commissioner Clapper and a second by Commissioner McGann, discussion of bills. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of ratifying the bills, raise your hand, say aye.
Yes.
And I don't see Josie on... Ah, okay, passes unanimously, six to nothing.
Commissioner Hadler, if you want, Christina is now in the meeting.
Okay, great. She, actually Christina got ahold of me earlier and said she had nothing to report, so, but...
Quinn, could you put that on gallery, so you can...
We have been joined by attorney Sloan. So we are up to general business items. Item 11A, tax relief resolution, income requirement change. Chris Kaufman, Grand County Treasurer.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Great. So I'm bringing a resolution forward, which I worked on along with a couple commission members, and the county attorney has also looked over it, and the reason that I drafted this resolution was because last year was the first year that I started bringing abatement applications that were denied to the commission for official denial, and that was at the suggestion of the Utah State Tax Commission, that the commission take a look at and officially deny the abatement applications that we get that don't qualify. And there was some interest expressed at that meeting for doing something for folks who happened to be just a little bit over the income limit. Because even being a bit over the income limit, the overall income for the household is still pretty low. So I took a look at some, some different ideas, including a bill that was introduced in the last legislative session that would have increased the income limit for most abatements. That bill would have increased it by about 127, by about 27%. And the amount that I included in the resolution was by 20%. And this wouldn't increase the income limit for every type of abatement that's available. The, especially the circuit breaker abatement is reimbursed in part by the state, and so that would have to continue to just follow the, the rules that the state has put out. But there, there's another abatement called the indigent abatement. It's similar to the circuit breaker. Applicants have to have, you know, be under, underneath the income limit. They also have to meet another qualification, either being age 65 or older, disabled or experiencing an extreme hardship. And this abatement is completely at the county's discretion, and it's paid for by coming out of the, the taxes that would have otherwise been collected in the county. And so this resolution proposes to consider the indigent abatement for folks who would be otherwise over the income limit, but not more than 100, 120% over that limit. And to put some, some numbers to that, the state's limit for 2022 is $35,807 in total household income. And that is a gross amount. So even if you're on social security and you've got some money coming out to pay for Medicaid or other things like that, we still have to count the, the entire amount of social security, even if you're not getting all of it. But 120% of that limit would be $42,968 in total household income. And the bill that didn't pass in the legislature would have brought it up to $45,807. And the indigent abatement has a slightly different benefit than the circuit breaker. It allows for a maximum amount that can be abated, which in 2022 is $1,110. Or half of the taxes that are due, whichever is less. So in most cases where I've seen the indigent abatement applied, they're, they're getting their taxes cut in half. Because most folks who qualify for it don't, don't get up to that full $1,110. The approval of these applications would be completely at the discretion of the commission, just like all the other abatement applications for indigent abatements are. Some of the abatements, like the circuit breaker, are required by the state, but the indigent is not. Some of the abatements, like the circuit breaker, are required by the state, but the indigent is not. Sorry about that. A phone call came through there. Does anyone have any questions about the resolution or anything that I can help to get you to understand why we have it?
Any questions for Chris?
Your estimation of an $11,000 fiscal impact, that's just off the, that minimum and probably about 10 families qualifying.
That was based off the maximum and 10, yeah, 10 households. So, and, and I, I really, you know, it's, it's a guess. It's definitely an estimate. A lot of folks, when they come in to ask about abatements and they find out about the income limit, if they're over, they just won't apply. So we don't really necessarily know how many folks, you know, would have applied who didn't. But I, but I think 10 is a reasonable estimate.
Thanks, Chris. Yes, Mary?
I move to approve the resolution to consider tax relief for applicants making up to 120% of the income limit.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner McGann and a second by Commissioner Clapper. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion? And it looks like the motion passes unanimously, six to nothing. All right. Thanks, Chris. We're up to item B, tax relief for 2021 property tax for parcel 02-0SWA-0008. Again, Chris Kaufman, County Treasurer, along with Cecilia Showalter. Cecilia, if you want to press star six or pence six. Star six to unmute. Uh, yes, we can hear you.
Am I unmuted? Chris?
Yes, yes, you're unmuted.
I can hear you as well, Cecilia.
Okay, okay. This is Cecilia Showalter. I am a disabled widow, elderly, indigent. And I forgot to send in my paper for my taxes for 19, or 19, 2021. And because of that, Mr. Cooper, who is the mortgage holder, is, has doubled my house payment. And it is over what I make per month. I make $1,074, no, yeah, $1,074, I think it is, per month. And they are charging me over $2,000. And they're, they are trying to take my home from me. I've lived here 22 years. And this has got me so stressed, I don't know what to do. My memory, I started losing my memory after my husband passed away in 2009. I was sent to Provo, to the mental institution. I forgot to, I can't forget to take my pills unless I'm reminded. I have to keep bills written down and registrar, so I remember to pay them. I have a brother that buys food at the store for me and I forget about it and let it rot in the refrigerator. My brother gets upset with me because he will tell me, I'm reading this, tell me things that we have forgotten, that I have forgotten. He already told me once or twice before. If a new or a regular bill comes and that I'm not used to paying, I'll forget to pay it. Yeah, I've got more.
That's, Mrs. Showalter, I think you've given us a, a great picture of your situation. I appreciate you getting on. Chris, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I, I think I laid out sort of the situation as, as far as, you know, what happened with the application process and how that affected the property taxes and that in turn affected the mortgage and the escrow and the mortgage payments. And that's laid out in the, in the packet and the agenda summary there. So I don't think we necessarily need to go over all of that. But, you know, it's, it's definitely at the commission's discretion to cancel these taxes, which would then result in a, in a, in a refund to Michelle Walter. I did, you know, so there's sort of two options. One would be to, to refund the full amount or a different amount. One option to consider that I put in the packet would be to refund an amount that, that would have been abated had the application been turned in in 2021.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Uh, yes, Mary?
Chris, so that amount that you, you think is, is $1,082.16, correct?
Ye- yes, that's what would have been abated had the application been turned in.
Okay, I would make a motion. I move to approve relief for tax, property tax for 2021 for partial 02-0SWA-0008 in the amount of $1,082.16.
Thank you, Mary. Motion by Commissioner McGann.
I'll second that.
And second by Commissioner Hedin. Any further discussion?
I, I don't understand, Chris. Am I, am I still going to have to pay taxes? Because I have never had to pay property taxes before, ever.
So I think we can definitely discuss what's going to happen with the abatement this year, but maybe not on the, on the meeting right now. But what they're considering right now is, is if, if this motion passes, then we'd be able to refund to you $1,082.
Thank you, Chris.
Well, that sounds good to me.
All right. Thank you, Chris and Mrs. Showalter. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, six to nothing. All right, we're up to item C, Grand County Active Trails and Transport, or Active Transportation and Trails Fiscal Incentive Grant, FIG.
Just real quick, Jacque, do you mind? Chris, thank you so much for taking care of that. The, the, I, my brain just totally stopped anyways, for taking into consideration the ordinance from previously.
You're welcome.
You, thank you.
Thanks, Trish. Good, good point. The heat, middle, middle of summer. Are you gonna take Maddie's place on that, Anna, or?
I think so. I've been trying to contact her.
Gotcha.
Do you want us to postpone table until she arrives?
Oh, I came just in case this happened.
Oh, okay. So you're prepared. Okay.
Okay. All right, Anna Sprout with GCAT. Yeah, come on up.
Um, so we are in the process of completing the application for the Utah OHV FIG grant. It has an educational portion to it. And so currently we have a non-motorized trail ambassador program that focuses on education at trailheads and on trails, on hiking and biking trails. And we're looking to expand that into the motorized realm. Our non-motorized trail ambassador program has had a total of 36,615 total encounters, which is simply seeing folks at the trailhead or on trail. And then 20,000, 23,765 of those are informative encounters in which some type of trail information or education is passed along. And so that's about 65% of the folks that we see, we educate. And with biking, we have a smaller program. It's been difficult to get employees. Two out of six of our positions are currently filled. But one of our trail ambassadors is a mountain biker and he's out there. And so he's had 1,299 encounters with mountain bikers. And 919 of those are informative encounters and that's 71% of the people that he sees on the trail, which is being educated. And so with this success, we're hoping to expand into different types of trail users. This includes the motorized community. This OHV FIG grant is an opportunity to branch into that direction. And so this grant, applying to this grant will help cover the costs of the motorized trail ambassador program. What we're applying for to help finance is content development, because content does look different with different type of users. So we've tailored ours to mountain biking and hiking. We need to tailor it to the motorized community. Two part-time employees for the next two years. And then two vehicles capable of handling intermediate level four by four trails. Because we would like to be at the trailhead and on trails, educating folks. There's benefit to both types of encounters and education. So the FIG program is only for OHV recreation. So this is, this funding will be for our motorized trails ambassador program. 10% of that total funding that they have goes towards education. So it's pretty competitive when we're looking in the education portion of their grant. But it's better suited to what we want to do than other grants that, that we know of. The minimum match for this grant is 25%. But a 50% match makes us more competitive. We've talked to the grants, the individual who manages this grant and a large request for this is usually $45,000 for education and we're asking for an even larger sum. So we just want to give that example. But applying to this grant is actually the first step in developing our program. And after, if we apply and if we get accepted, there's many more conversations that follow within the motorized community in developing this program. Um, so moving into the Responsible Recreation Fund, which is part of my salary, comes from TRT revenue. It's about $250,000 for 2022. The year-to-date expenditures excluding payroll is approximately $25,000. And that's set up costs for non-motorized trail ambassador program that that were expended in 2021. On-the-ground projects in the pipeline unrelated to the trail ambassador program are expected to be another $50,000. Estimated remaining in 2023 is $175,000 in our budget. So the grant finances, a number of things. One of the largest costs is vehicles. We have attached budgets that show the estimated cost for these two vehicles. These have been recommended by the Motorized Trail Committee. It includes a Jeep Wrangler Rubicon with an additional package that assists us in writing, driving our trails. And then a Can-Am Commander, which is the quietest side-by-side that we can find. And we want a diverse type of vehicles because trail ambassadors relate to a variety of different types of users. So it's important that they're able to make that relation ships with people. And the cost estimates are based on MSRP, but the Grand County Fleet Manager says we have state contracts with both brands and we can also look for low mileage vehicles. Are, we recommend, or it's recommended that a match larger than 25% be matched. And note, I'm moving into notes that are more specific to what Maddie, Maddie's level of knowledge. But so, so know that the Grand County, that Grand County pays for project costs and is reimbursed and can request to receive up to 75% of the awarded funding upfront or can wait until the project completion and request all of it. The grant committee may, if we do put in for this, they may accept and award us a partial amount of the funding. So we just have to keep that in mind. And so what we've attached in this, this section is our abstract, a draft budget and then grant match options. And we're just asking for the commission to help to know which option you prefer. So those are attached. If you'd like me to review them with you, I can't.
Yeah, I was able to review those. Anna, thanks. So basically the amounts are the ones in the shaded areas for the, for the three different?
That would be the, the amount that we match.
The weed, so the amount that the county would spend, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. The 50%, 40%, 25% and then?
Yeah. Yep.
Depending which vehicles we.
Exactly.
I have a question. I guess it's kind of specific. I was thinking about if we got a county Can-Am and you were anticipating just driving it out to the trailheads. That probably limits you in scope to nearby trailheads. So then is that just sand flats that you're thinking that you would use that for?
Um, so there's also Kane Creek and Poison Spider Mesa. I think those are definitely two that have been recommended by the Motorized Trails Committee to set up at. And so we, we drive out there. I'm not a specialist in driving, but based on their recommendations, these are two vehicles that we could use to, to build relationships with them. So it would be a little bit further out at times.
When you, I, I wasn't able to attend the last MTC meeting, unfortunately, when you discussed that. But did you discuss using the Can-Am out at Poison Spider as well as the Jeep? Because it seemed, I think that's more of a Jeep trail. I could be wrong.
We did not go over that portion of the discussion.
Right. And it was you, they thought it would be best to get a UTV and a Jeep just to appeal to the different user groups?
Um, I don't want to speak directly for them, but from what I can remember, there was consensus on both of them, if we so choose, understanding that we, there might not be the option for both, dependent on your decision and.
And, and if there wasn't an option for both, it looks like here, it was thought that the Jeep would be the, the vehicle of choice, right? Was, was there a reason for that? It seems like maybe the UTVs are in more need of an ambassador than the Jeepers.
Right. I think that I think we came around to wanting to represent both. So if we had the option and we were able to reach into both. It's also really important to our program to provide diverse education. And so we wanted to make sure that if we're moving into the motorized community, we're moving into two different communities within the motorized community. It's, we want to approach this with the idea that we're approaching the motorized community as a whole.
I think, I agree with that philosophy. I think just in the application, to me, it seems that if, if maybe the Can-Am is only being used to go up to sand flats, because it's the closest, Sand Flats Recreation Area already has a bunch of people working up there doing outreach and also using UTVs. And so I don't quite see the need there, but, and I wouldn't, I think I wouldn't want to encourage a county employee to have to do the high-speed driving to get out to Poison Spider or King Creek. It just seems unnecessary to me if a trail ambassador isn't going to actually encounter the people while driving necessarily. They'll have to stop maybe at a feature or at a trailhead and set up a little bit and have, have an encounter. And I think that somebody driving a Jeep could still talk to an ATV user pretty effectively. I don't know. That's just my opinion. So if, also just this being the very start of this program and a trial run and trying to see if, if that is deemed necessary, I could see maybe. if that is deemed necessary, I could see maybe applying for a different grant another year or coming back, trying to expand to get another vehicle. But right now I'm feeling inclined to just go with the Jeep option.
And that's definitely why we provided.
Right.
I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear you.
That's why we provided an option for the Jeep.
For the two different amounts, right? Anyone else care to opine?
I just kind of had a question and I don't know if this is for you, Anna, or if it's more of a Maddie or someone else's question. But could you explain the difference in our budget between the grant match? Says grant match existing in the twenty twenty two budget, funds for reimbursable grant purchases needed in twenty twenty two budget? What's, what's this different silence?
Your question, sorry, just so that I
Under the Agenda Summary, the Fiscal Impact, says grant matching existing in twenty twenty two budget, funds for reimbursable grant purchases needed in twenty twenty two. So I didn't know kind of if there were numbers between what was existing, what was needed, or kind of what the difference there was.
I think, and I probably shouldn't be quoted on this, but I think what, what meant there is that we may need to pay for something that is a part of the grant or funded by the grant and be reimbursed later. That's the answer.
I guess, just, I probably should have said this before my spiel to do just the Jeep thing. But I was just noticing in the budget that the vehicle category is the largest expense above staff time above any other setup cost. And it seems like it's, it greatly dwarfs the setup cost of the non-motorized trail ambassador program. So, I mean, all of that just goes into what I was thinking about, maybe trying to decrease that, that budget item.
For just the Jeep?
Just, yeah, both of them are listed and it makes it the biggest expense.
The vehicle is one of the larger, is the biggest expense. One thing I'll note with our non-motorized trail ambassador program is that it is important for trail ambassadors to have a county vehicle to drive out there. And so right now we are using vehicles that other county departments did not want. And so those vehicles, while effective to getting us there, I don't know if they necessarily set the expectation that we might know what we're doing at a motorized trailhead. Yeah. So, and it would help, it helps with transporting materials.
But so the Jeep would be available to the non-motorized trail ambassadors when, when it's not being used now?
That, that's not the intent.
Sure, sure.
It's intended for motorized trail ambassadors.
But it's, it's your opinion that paying someone mileage to drive their personal off-road vehicle out to do this work would be inappropriate?
Um, it's my opinion that I want to make sure my staff feels cared for. And it has been expressed to me about using their personal vehicles to drive the thirty minutes to Corona Arch and back. Does, considering they do it sometimes two to four times a week.
Yeah, no, I was more thinking, I think a lot of the bike ambassadors ride their own bikes. I assume that a lot, that whoever would be representing the motorized trail ambassadors would also be enthusiasts. And they have a nicer Jeep that they would prefer to take on the trails. And so I, but I can, I hear what you're saying about asking them to, to use. It's a lot different than using a bicycle for work, so.
And, and that has, those are discussions about bicycles that were happening. We just don't have many trail, biking trail ambassadors.
Do you have some interest?
Yeah, I guess we're somewhat scrutinizing the budget, but what's with the four thousand dollar tire package? Oh, believe me, I drive big trucks, or I did, and I, I spend a thousand bucks.
I understand. It is a lot. So one of the things that we're, that we needed to consider was modifications that might need to happen to a vehicle. And the four thousand dollar package is a thirty-five inch tire set that comes stock. So if, if it was purchased new, the modification, that modification from Jeep gives us a vehicle that it can access level five trails from, to my knowledge.
Right. And that would mostly be Poison Spider, probably.
Probably.
Yeah.
And that was at the recommendation of the motorized trail.
Right.
I have a clarifying question about the budget. So you referred to having probably like a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars remaining in the budget. If you were at full staff, would you, how, how much of that would you have?
There's, I'm, I'm not sure. We, if we had full staff, I would have to purchase, if we look at that, I just have to find it really fast in that budget. If we were fully staffed, that supplies and materials for just non-motorized. We have three sets of trail ambassador setups, but I would have to purchase more incentive items, more sandwich boards, more safety equipment and more storage bins and potentially tents, depending on the time of year. So I'd have to, I'd have to buy, purchase those anyways if we, if we were able to expand to six. And I think that the money, the, I was hired around in March, but that money would have been nice as we acquired more individuals to just kind of equip them for their, their time out in the field.
Is there, the pay would also come out of that?
Um, I think the section that of the grant or their pay wouldn't come out of that. I think it's already been thought about, pulled from that. Because it's already been set aside for six trail ambassadors.
Right.
Anna, I have a question. In, in considering purchasing an A T V for this program, has there been discussion about purchasing an electric as opposed to fuel?
Yes.
A T V?
Yes, there have been. And so that was, that was a question that we brought to a couple, to the Motorized Trails Committee and some stakeholders as well. And the recommendation from, from each of them was the Commander Can-Am, based predominantly on availability. I do know that there are some, some, I don't want to speak for them, but we did have conversations with businesses here. Folks employed and there was mentioned that they were supposed to receive electric vehicles. And so we would just be on a waiting list.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would love that direction. I know Polaris makes this an electric side-by-side. I don't know what the weight is for that and I don't know what Can-Am has. But I think that would be a good avenue if we were to buy an actual fleet A T V.
Right. I think we looked at the lowest decibel vehicle that we could find. We had recommendations for a more user-friendly A T V, but the decibel levels are higher. So we're definitely very aware of the need to have to kind of set a, a standard with our public facing trail ambassadors and based on what's available right now, the Can-Am was the best option, lowest accessible as well.
And it was one of the very quietest U T Vs that the county tested in the noise when we did all of our noise testing earlier this spring too.
And fifty percent match versus a twenty-five percent match or the forty percent match is just to make our application more appealing?
Yes, the higher the match, the more appealing it is within the education portion of the grant selection.
Jacque, do you want to take a stab at this as the Motorized Trail Committee rep or?
Um, I, I, I love the direction it's going. I think the motorized community could, I think having an ambassador for that community would be great. And it's something that we've worked on in the Motorized Trail Committee and the, and the Responsible Recreation. I, I'm a little reticent about the U T V right now. I think that like six, like once we get the program started with the Jeep and in six months or a year down the line, that adding that would be a great option, especially if there is a electric option. Then we wouldn't have to offload a, you know, the vehicle that we purchased now. So I, I'm, I'm very supportive of the program and I think I, my tendency would be to go with the fifty percent match at the Jeep-only level is kind of what I, what I was thinking for, for the present.
Is that a motion?
Am I allowed to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right. A motion by Evan and a second by Trish. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I think it's, I'm super supportive of it also. I just think it'd be best to kind of not jump all in at once and then just see how the program is going. And I do love Josie's idea of, you know, purchasing an electric U T V down the road. So I think that's a great idea, Jacque.
Um, just, just to let you know, this is a bi-annual grant as well. So it is something we can apply for in the future as well.
Great. Yeah. Awesome. For even just the vehicle portion?
I do believe so, especially if it was geared towards education. The state has a trail host program as well. But if we're able to show that our program has worked within our county, I do believe we could apply for a grant to expand our user group representation.
All right. Okay. And Maddie has just joined us. Maddie Anna did a great job of her presentation. I think we're, I think we're, I think we're ready to vote unless you have anything to add. You probably didn't see that or if anyone has a specific question for Maddie.
We can't get a Jeep on the Enterprise Fleet lease first.
Yeah, sorry, everyone. I had some, some serious technical difficulties where I am right now. So thanks, Anna.
Yeah, um, you mentioned that. Was that a question that I should answer?
I would assume.
I think we have, we have been working with Cody to see what we can get. We just want to make sure that the vehicle that we do have is stock-ready or just ready for our trails. So we are working, looking at those. I believe we have a state contract.
Yes, you mentioned that earlier.
I just have a quick question, like, has the Motorized Trail Committee and you all talked about maybe annual maintenance costs? I just have the sense that off-roading is a pretty expensive endeavor and it's
There are, yes, we, I don't believe we brought that up. I think that's one of the reasons why a new Jeep is a good idea. Because, and then training as well. You'll notice in the budget, there is training, which we would seek for our motorized trail ambassadors to help them understand how to work our vehicle and keep it in the best shape possible. But I would, no, the maintenance costs were not discussed.
And I would say you are correct.
Right.
I'm not an off-roader, but I know my truck just like fall, pieces just fall off it all the time. Right.
But, but hopefully purchasing a new vehicle should mitigate a lot of that for at least a few years.
Sure. Whatever.
Okay. Any, any other questions or are we ready to vote? Looks like we are ready to vote. I have a motion on the table by Commissioner Clapper and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously, six to nothing. Thank you, Anna.
Thank you, Anna.
Yeah.
Good luck. I wish you the best.
Yeah.
Got, got us looking for
I think it's an exciting development and continuation of our, of our trail ambassador program.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, we're on to item D, adopting an ordinance initiating a temporary land use regulation prohibiting the erection, construction, reconstruction or alteration of any building or structure or any subdivision approval requiring new water connections within the Thompson Special Service District boundary. Attorney, County Attorney Christina Sloan.
Yes, Thompson. You guys have been here before, although this one's different. We'll talk about why, but this is about water in Thompson. This is our third temporary land use regulation that we've considered recently. They each do have a different basis, which is required by law. The underlying problem though is that Thompson's water, which is all based on surface water rights, are drying up and have been for more than a decade. I think maybe two decades is, is accurate. So the first moratorium temporary land use regulation that we passed over a year ago was because we discovered there was an issue and the T S S D board discovered there was an issue and that they had been approving water connections that they didn't actually have water for. So we instituted the first temporary land use regulation for a six-month period while we got into place a, while we studied the issue, hired an engineer, worked with the board to move forward about what to do. Then in the second temporary land use regulation period, we updated that study. We helped the T S S D board update their study. Sunrise Engineering did that work. They found there is a forty percent water deficit, which is serious. This is based on state assumptions and state law. There may be some wiggle room for T S S D to work with the Division of Drinking Water and D E Q to reduce some of those assumptions, but so far they haven't been able to move forward on that work. They did also in that timeframe submit an application to the B L M to potentially develop a new water source. What's interesting is that used to be an old water source of T S S D that they had abandoned at some point. So they're working with the B L M to potentially permit a new source. They're also looking into a, as they call it, the pipe dream project, which is obtaining Umtres water rights when they're done with the project and fundraising to pipe water all the way from the Green River. So that's another option. And then the fourth option they're looking at is buying, buying water rights in the area from other ranchers or properties that are for sale. None of those have moved forward very far and that is why we're looking at a temporary land use regulation again. And talking the, my most recent contact with the B L M was in June. They confirmed that they, they've asked for multiple revisions or modifications to the, the S S D's application for the new water right. They have not yet determined that application is complete, although it sounds like that should happen soon, hopefully. Once that application is deemed complete by the B L M, the environmental assessment process starts and that alone is a six-month process. So quite frankly, I think we're more than six months out from even moving forward with the B L M. Once that's done, they have a lot of work to do with Sunrise Engineering to get into place source water protection plans, but, but not just that, they've got to do a bunch of engineering reporting to delineate a protection zone and then they've got to adopt this new plan. So again, we're, we're looking at a whole lot of work going forward. Really, I want to emphasize that this temporary land use regulation, the most important thing it does is to provide notice to everyone that there's no water, that we're working on developing the water and that no new development that requires new water connections can be approved. And so of course it doesn't affect new development where water connections have already been approved by the T S S D. These are new water connections. That's really important for notice to the public, notice to owners out there, but also efficiency within T S S D and even the county and the health department. So that none of us are wasting time on applications that we can actually deny fair and square. It's very clear, black and white in our land use code that we can deny any of these new developments anyway because there's no water. But this is a really important mechanism for efficiency within those agencies.
Great. Thank you, Christina. And as the T S S D representative, I agree with all those points. And I think that they are expecting us to pass this as well. So I don't think it's going to be a surprise to anybody.
Jacque, maybe I could say, yeah, I did reach out to the director of the T S S D who supports this. I reached out to our D E Q Regional Engineer who supports this. I reached out to the B L M who supports this.
And we, we discussed this at the last T S S D meeting and I indicated it was likely that we would continue the six-month moratorium. And we we discussed this at the last TSSD meeting, and I indicated that it was likely that we would continue the six-month moratorium. Any other questions for Christina?
When you say that we're gonna, we, in air quotes, are going to continue to work on developing other water sources, do we have an obligation as the county to ensure that the special service district has water, or is that kind of up to them?
Ultimately, a failure of a special service district is going to come back as a liability to the county. So there's always that out there that we need to be worried about. We do have some special powers to make sure the board is operating correctly and is appointed or elected appropriately and legally. So we have oversight there. And when I do say we, I've certainly been providing legal support where I can. TSSD doesn't have an attorney on staff. Chris Baird's certainly been helping. Obviously, our commission liaisons, it was Trish before Jac has been extremely involved and spent a ton of time. So we're really just helping TSSD with some in-kind professional support when we can. But ultimately, it really is their problem and and they're taking it seriously and doing their work. So they're also working really hard to try to solve this problem.
They are very much, yeah.
That's great. That's really good to hear.
And does this address hauling water? If there was a permit application that outlined hauling water instead of a hookup?
This does not give an exemption for hauling water, since the future really is quite uncertain. And we're talking about surface water rights that are drying up. Let's be frank, you know, with climate change, even if they develop the new water source, we don't know what the potential is. The Umtre project is absolutely a pipe dream. We don't know if that's reality. So right now, I can't recommend that we allow new development that is reliant on hauling water, where we really just don't know how stable that is and for how long.
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion.
Awesome, please.
Um, I move to adopt the ordinance enacting a temporary land use regulation prohibiting the erection, construction, and reconstruction, or alteration of any building or structure, or any subdivision approval requiring new water connections within the Thompson Special Service District Boundary. To be effective, August 1st, 2022.
Thanks, Sarah.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Stock and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. Any further discussion on this?
I'll just state that I I'm really happy to see this come to the table. Specifically, I just read an article today in the Real Estate Guide about Thompson, and it's like how it's this up and coming coming place, and it scared the bejeebers out of me. So, yeah, that's all I'm going to say. So I was I was happy to see this.
Thanks, Trish.
Yeah, and I'm very happy that we're not making an exception for hauled water, because as we can see in Arizona, they've built whole subdivisions outside of Phoenix and Scottsdale that rely on hauled water, and now Phoenix and Scottsdale are cutting off the ability to haul water from Phoenix.
I saw that article too, yeah.
Let's just avoid that situation.
Right.
Do the right thing.
And that was a big thing, and maybe Jac can speak to this, at the TSSD, that they're still allowing water coming out of their loadout. But the reality is you can cut off that loadout at any time is what we had basically surmised. You might want to speak to that, but.
That, no, that's.
Okay. But they are still allowing water to be hauled out of their loadout, but that loadout can be cut off at any point. It is a big fiscal boon to the water district.
Right, and the prices just went up, so it's even more so.
Okay, great.
I, just for the sake of discussion, I was conflicted at times with this. I think that Thompson is a kind of seeing a resurgence. I was excited to see that. I was excited to see people investing in Thompson. I have a hard time kind of like telling private property folks that they can't, you know, fulfill these investments. But I think that it's it's a struggle because it is the reality on the ground. And there isn't water out there. We did just highlight in our general plan that we wanted to take water into considerations and permitting things. And so it's upsetting that this body in the past failed to support the Special Service District in preparing and seeing this coming down the pipeline. But to the, to the attorney's point, I think that this is valuable to raise the flag and kind of put everyone on alert, not just locally, but in a larger venue that that the lack of water is is affecting development around here and that it's not just us saying we want to consider it, but that there's just not water to give to people. And hopefully that can promote some some changes at higher levels as well.
I'll make a kind of a comment, but Jac might be able to back me up on some of these numbers because my memory is slightly fading. But yeah, it should be stated that, you know, they, all they have is surface water. They've attempted to drill wells. I don't know how deep they went. It's feasible if you went 1,000 feet deep like they did out in West Water, you could pull water. I don't know if they ever tried to go that deep. But the surface water in my memory of those logs, in the last 10 years, it went from 200 gallons a minute to 65 gallons a minute is my memory. Is that correct? So so that people have a real understanding of when we talk about diminished, how how those springs are diminishing. And I'll just say anecdotally, being up in the Book Cliffs, a lot of those springs that even in the last few years are drying up that were really kind of vibrant springs. So it's very real what's going on up there.
And this is just a six-month temporary thing, and we can undo it earlier if if these things come online sooner, so.
All right, I'll call for a vote. I have a motion on the table by Commissioner Stock and a second by Commissioner Dean. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Say aye. Motion passes unanimously. And on to item 11 or 11E, terminating Ken Lord ground lease dated December 18, 2018, and approving new ground lease for Canyonlands Hangers LLC for Lot 108 at Canyonlands Regional Airport. We have Tara Collins, Assistant to the Airport Director.
Hi. Hi, how are you all?
Good.
Yeah, so Ken Lord had a lease on Lot 108 at the airport. He signed it December 2018. And now he's ready to build. He has a new partner. And so we decided to draft a new lease, to terminate the old lease and draft a new lease, because the terms are better for them and better for us. We have a new lease template.
All right, anyone have a question for? No, Sarah, did you want to?
I'll make a motion. I move to terminate the ground lease with Ken Lord for Lot 108 dated December 18, 2018, and approve a new ground lease with Canyonlands Hangers LLC for Lot 108.
Thanks, Sarah. Do I have a second? Second by Mary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six to nothing unanimously.
I would just mention that there was a change in the packet today regarding this. So if anybody at home is looking at an older version, there were some slight tweaks to the lease.
Thank you, Evan.
Yeah, thanks, Evan. If you've refreshed your browser after four o'clock, it should be. All right, thank you, Quinn. On to item 11F, special permit event for the 2022 Red Rock Four Wheelers Labor Day Safari and Camp Out. Angie Book, OUSTA Director. Hi, Angie.
But I don't know if, like, it's green.
Well, it's just, you know, it's kind of.
So the Red Rock Four Wheelers have been hosting the Labor Day Safari and Camp Out for over 30 years. This event is meant to be a smaller version of their time-honored event Jeep Safari on a much smaller scale. Registration is limited to 150 vehicles with the motto of stay together, play together. Trails are limited to 25 vehicles per trail, and the Red Rock Four Wheelers will only be utilizing eight trails on Saturday and Sunday and six trails on Monday. A limited number of registered participants will be staying at the Moab Rim Campground, while the remaining participants choose other amenities. The Red Rock Four Wheelers will be sponsoring three meals provided by the Moab Masons Club, and the Masons will be donating the proceeds from the meals to the Moab Free Health Clinic.
Great, thanks, Angie. Questions for Angie? How how long has the event been running, Angie? This is a long time.
Over 30 years.
Over three, okay. On Labor Day?
Yep.
Great. Evan?
I would move to approve the 2022 Red Rock Four Wheelers Labor Day Safari and Camp Out special event permit under the currently approved special event ordinance.
Thanks, Evan.
I'll second that.
Second by Trish. Any further discussion on this one? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor. And the motion passes unanimously. We have a slate of items for Angie. So we'll move up to 11G. The 22, 2022 Jeep Jamboree Special Event Permit, and back to you.
Okay, let me get this one pulled up here. So the Jeep Jamboree, this will be their 24th annual Jeep Jamboree in Moab. Jeep Jamborees are off-road adventure weekends that bring together the outdoors, down-to-earth people in their Jeep four-by-fours. These off-road treks have a long tradition dating back to 1953. Registration is 135 vehicles spaced over three days with a choice of 10 different trails. Mandatory trail meetings will be at OSA Daily with scheduled meals at Moab Valley Inn.
Great, thanks, Angie. What was the date?
Yeah, that's what I was going to add.
Oh, this one is.
Sorry.
This one's in October, and it's October 27 through 29.
Okay, and that's over a Friday to Sunday weekend, or?
Yeah, I think it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Thursday, Friday, okay. Thanks, Angie. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mary.
I move to approve the 2022 Jeep Jamboree Special Event Permit under the current special event ordinance.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Commissioner McGann, second by Commissioner Dean. Further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. Say aye. All those opposed? Okay, Commissioner, the motion passes five to one with Commissioner Stock opposed. And we are on to item 11H, the 2022 PGP Auto Show Special Event Permit. And again, Angie.
Okay, so the PGP Car Show, this will be the second annual year for the PGP Auto Show. This event will be for auto enthusiasts with the goal of 100 car entries and 1,000 participants. The car show is being sponsored by a local family ran business with a group of local community members helping as volunteers. 2021 PGP Auto Show ran smoothly for smoothly for OSA staff with no issues concerning future events. The event holders ran a professional, organized, clean event. I ask that the county commission approve this event today with the following condition. The PGP Auto Show will provide proof of required insurance with approval of their event. The event holder currently submitted a tent for their insurance.
All right, and the date, that was, that was a one-day event, right, Angie?
Yes, in September.
And so this is the periode event. So last year, you, it all went well for you guys. Did you hear anything kind of from Sheriff's Department, any law enforcement?
There was nothing. There was no issues. The only negative thing I heard was that it was too expensive to get in, and they're changing that this year.
Okay, you know, I'm a big Bryson and Brenner fan, so.
And I have to tell you, out of all my event holders, they're the most organized. They know how to run an event. Yep.
Okay.
They're they're on it. They have everything lined out, everything I've needed. They've gotten to me. Any concerns I've had, they've addressed it.
Great.
Did they sell out their event last year, Angie?
What's that?
Did they sell out their event last year?
They did not sell. Yeah, it was.
It was the first year.
One of the biggest events.
Right, yeah.
Right. Because I know that when we passed it last year, it was kind of like under the auspices of, let's kind of see how it goes, so.
I remember that as well, yeah.
Great, that's good to hear.
I know last year there was discussion around cruising the strip or whatever and action kind of like overflowing into town. And did anybody hear any anecdotally, if there was anything?
I didn't see anything myself.
I I don't remember noticing anything, but that's also the time of year that I tend to avoid main streets.
I think it's really hard with these issues because it's like Moab is dying by death, by a thousand cuts, where even if some of these events are smaller or have been going on for 30 years, they're still having an impact on the baseline noise level in Moab, and it's hard to point specific fingers. So I'm just hopeful that our special events process where we get to look at all of these things eventually will have some kind of impact on that. But it's going to be making calls where we just say no more new motorized events or no more new, or we get rid of some of the bigger events that have been going on for a long time that are from out-of-state sponsors like the Jeep Jamboree or something, you know? So I just think it's it's difficult to say.
Jamboree, the Red Rock Four Wheelers?
No, no, that was the one. That's why I voted for it. I probably should have spoke on the on the actual item. But I just think if we're going to keep permitting new local events, which I would rather do, I think we should take a hard look at some of the longer running ones that are maybe not directly coming from our community.
Yeah, I would agree. I think I I would be more receptive to to housing localized events because I know people like the periodes are just as concerned with our town and noise in our town as as we are, right? And so I think they would, yeah.
So last year at the car show, there was a majority of it was locals participating and being registered car owners. And just to speak on the Jeep Jamborees behalf also, there's several local businesses that partake in Jeep Jamboree, that offer of vehicles that, businesses that partake in that event.
Thanks, Angie. Any other discussion on this?
This is getting off on a tangent, but part of the considerations in revamping the special event permit approval application is trying to figure out an idea where we can sit down with a large chunk of applications at once and kind of weigh them against each other, you know, as a big picture total package sort of thing, rather than each individual application individually. So I do like that, you know, even tonight, we're seeing a series of them together, and we can start to ask these kind of questions like, well, if we're going to approve this one, should we let another one go? And and so I think that we're on the right path with with kind of looking at the big picture. So thanks for bringing these all in together. And another part of one of the things we're looking for and looking at is is not just, you know, are they being put put on by locals, but the attendance, like you're saying. And so we are, I think that there's a strong push to prioritize events that are catering to residents and citizens and things that they would like to attend. And I think that this was well-attended last year, so.
Can I make one more comment on this event, too? They're also using local vendors. So the food vendors.
Great.
The vendors at the show are local.
Thank you. All right, anyone care to make a motion?
I move to approve the 2022 PGP Auto Show Special Event Permit under the current approval of special event origins, with the condition they provide proof of insurance.
Thank you, Mary.
I'll second that.
All right, motion on the table by Commissioner McGann and second by Commissioner Dean. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Say aye. All right, motion passes unanimously, six to nothing. And we're on to the item 11I, 2022 Moab Overland Expo Special Event Permit, and back to Angie.
Okay, I'm, this will be the first year for the Moab Overland Expo. And this will be the first year in Moab and for the Old Spanish Trail Arena to host the Moab Overland Expo. The Moab Overland Experience is an adventure. The Moab Overland Experience is an adventure and a lifestyle gathering of like-minded owners and industry professionals, all with a passion for the great outdoors. This event will be a four-day camping-based expo at Osta with scheduled workshops based for the overland lifestyle. The event holder will also be offering camping onsite at Osta. There will be no organized trails for this event. The event will be based at Osta only. I have received a majority approval from the Special Event Committee and the referral agencies with Josie Kovas, um, going abstain from comment, and Christina Sloan withholding for preliminary matter. Um, I would like to request that the county commission approve the Special Event Permit for the 2022 Moab Overland Expo on the following conditions: receipt of Special Event Sales Tax License, and the 2022 being a probationary year to see how the event affects the Grand County community for a reoccurring event in the future.
Angie, what did you say the attorney's, um, uh, opinion was?
Um, she said preliminary matter.
Preliminary matter.
What's that mean?
Do you all want me to clarify?
Sure.
Said over and over again that you would like to see motorized and non-local new events come before you early on in the process. We've talked about how hard it is to deny an event at the end of the process. And yet, and, and the motorcycle rally race is another one that yet these things keep coming to you guys at the end of the process. So I was objecting to process, that here we are doing this again. So I withheld approval in any way for that reason.
Gotcha. Thank you, Christina.
Hi, and then just, um, for clarification on this, when this event first came to me and I started processing it, it was bef, at the beginning of the year, before all of that. So I did send an email out to the Special Event Committee, um, and some other people, letting them know that this event was coming. Uh, it's a brand-new event, it's gonna be a big event, how they wanted me to proceed. So, uh, that email was sent out.
Right.
Towards the beginning of the year.
And to clarify, they're not, they're not doing any trail runs, or they're not driving around town. It's just, it's simply an expo for, and overland is mostly like van lifer kind of thing, camping.
With workshops.
Right. Yes, Sarah.
Well, okay, so I'm gonna vote against this, basically because I don't think we need this. It's an out, it's not a local.
It, it's local. Some of them are locals. Some of them have interest in a local business near town, so they're split, so it's fifty-fifty.
Are you talking about the vendors, or?
Um, the event person, the event holder.
Uh-huh. I'm looking at the online and it says it's registered in Hurricane, and I don't see any local businesses listed as registered vendors. But also, I mean, just to go on, I just think that this isn't, this event isn't for, for locals, it's for other folks and ah, let's see. It's geared up to get people psyched about overlanding, which is this big fad, but as we know, it's what we used to call camping, car camping. Um, and it's all about the expo, the selling of the gear, um, and gets people, like, pe- I just think that, that these folks are gonna keep coming back to Moab then, looking for the backcountry experience and, and using their new overland skills. And I think, while I think that we should be welcoming to this ki- kind of recreation, I think that's, Moab has always been welcoming to this, like, people seeking this backcountry experience. I don't think that we need to cater to this expo-type vibe, and I just think that there's already a lot of hype around this fad, and these things are happening all over the country. There's some in the local, in Colorado and other places where these just expos are happening. So people can go learn skills elsewhere. Um, I don't know, I think Moab's already on the map for overlanding, and that we don't really need to cater to these non-local manufacturers and of gear and equipment. Can I respond to that?
No.
Go ahead, Mary.
My thoughts this year, and, and the fact that it's a probation, so we can watch it and see what's going on. Uh, you know, I, some of the restaurants and such are really hurting this year. They're not getting, I mean, I'm shocked when I go in and you see, like, there's four tables. And, uh, and I think, you know, there's probably many reasons, probably mostly the gas is keeping people from coming to town, so I, you know. I also agree with a lot, and I think we need to be very critical of what we look at with, uh, special events, but this is probationary, it's for this year. And I'm going to vote for it because I want to support our local restaurants and our local people who are having a tough year. Just, I, you know, they say it's either the gas prices, or there's lots of things they're blaming it on, and we had a bizarre year last year where it was just, you know.
Up.
Up, 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 and so this year it's getting, but it is below what it was in two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah.
And so think, uh, this will bring people to town who will be eating in our restaurants and, uh, buying in our shops and helping our local people, and right now they need it.
How many campsites are available at Osta for participants?
Um, I, there, there's not really, it's not really counted out, but this is all dry camping, so there's plenty of room.
Okay.
Um.
Well, they, they'll camp on the, on the grass fields then?
On, on the racetrack.
On the racetrack?
Yeah, no camping grass.
Gotcha.
Um, but with this being said, we've been planning this event for all year. So they've already put so much money into this event. They have all their insurance paid for. They have swag already bought. Um, their registration's full for vendors. They already have a pretty full registration for campers coming in. Um, and then this, this group that's coming in, these van lifers, these vans are expensive. Um, so it's a different level of camping. Um, these people are here to spend money and, and to buy things. Um, so to take that into consideration.
And they won't just be buying there, they'll be buying a lot in town.
And they're also using local vendors, too.
Local, like, food vendors, et cetera.
I do think it's a real problem that things are coming to us this late.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like, hopefully we'll be able to fix this issue, because to be forced to, and I'm not saying that, but I'm just giving an example, to be forced to, you know, okay, something, because we're like, oh, they've already put so much time and effort and money into it, so we have to, it's like, we have to, we have to fix this, right? We've, we've got some major issues in our Special Event Permitting. But that being said, we're working on it.
Yeah, we all state that. And it's that, you know, we're looking at the events now where before,
Yeah.
we weren't even looking at them, so. I move to approve the 2022, um, Moab Overland Expo Special Event Permit under the current Special Event Ordinance, with the conditions on providing a special event sale tax license and a 2022 being a probationary year for future special events permitting.
I have a motion by Commissioner McGann. Anyone like to second?
I'll second it. Uh, I, I do like the idea that it's a probationary year, and, and then hopefully Angie will just tell us how it went, and, and, and so.
Do we?
Never mind.
I was saying, Osta staff will be present for the whole event, too.
Right. Any other, uh, questions for Angie or discussion? Josie, it looks like you had some.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add to the discussion, um, you know, because I did abstain on this as a member of the Approval Committee, um, for a lot of the reasons discussed, that it is a, a new event and that we didn't get the commission's input on the intent to apply stage, and so I really wanted to, uh, let the whole commission kind of, uh, deliberate over this because I agree that I really want to get into our new, uh, kind of phase of special events, um, standards before really tackling a lot of new events. Um, I, I definitely think Sarah praised it well, and, um, she talked about sort of a death by a thousand cuts of a, of motorized events, and, um, you know, I think this is a different kind of motorized event, which is why I'm, I'm curious to let it proceed, um, with both, with something like Jeep Jamboree, I, I feel like I can't, um, really, uh, sort of buck precedent until we have new standards in place that would inform that uh, as far as approving an event like that, because I, I do think we just have so many similar events that it's hard to remember who is involved with what and what are the different, you know, parameters, because they just start to really all look alike, and it would be good to really start diversifying, um, our events. And I will say, it seems like Osta has a really good, um, kind of system for following up on events and their impacts, and so I would really hope with this, uh, event that we do get, um, some good feedback from how it goes, so that we can sort of take a look at that as we move forward as well. Um, so I think that kind of sums up where I'm at.
Thank you, Josie.
And I just want to reiterate, if this had happened, come to me last year, when our tourists were, you know, it was out of control, I would probably be leaning, you know, a little bit towards not approving, but I, I, I see the hurt that our community's feeling right now. I went, yesterday, I, we picked up some Thai food, and in the years past, I'd walk into there to pick up, and the place would be jammed, and literally there was one table.
Yeah.
One table being, you know, and it's down, you know, in other areas. I hear it all the time, it's Travel Commission, uh, Travel Council, and so for that reason, I, I want to support our local businesses.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. I, I'd, I'd agree with that, too. I've just been out of town for three weeks and got back for the last two days, and I'm very surprised at, at, uh, how light businesses in town, including my shop.
Have you guys gone outside, or you missed it? Did you go outside?
It's hot. My try set a hundred and thirteen.
Angie, I have just a kind of logistics question. So when you have this many campers, do you bring in porta-potties? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, porta-potties, dumpsters, um, sinks.
Perfect, okay. Oh, cool, okay.
Great.
Yeah, yeah, they're all scheduled to arrive.
Great.
Some events even bring in showers.
And that's all with zonage?
Uh, for the most part, yeah. Showers don't, showers come from the Salt Lake region.
Okay, cool. Thank you, that helps.
It seems like there might be momentum to pass this event, I don't know. But, um, given that, I think that this, since it's an expo, I think we should try to get our responsible recreation people to at least go to that event because it's all about training and do some of the leave no trace stuff.
That's a, that's a great idea.
But I, also, yeah, just want to stress, this is a motorized event. There's, there's courses on like how to ri- drive a motorcycle and do back four-wheeling, and so and people are bringing their giant camping vans that are rigged up to be able to do some of our more complicated trail systems, which probably have higher impact really on the trails, because they're so much heavier. So, I don't know, I just think that it's not, you know.
Um, that's actually some of their workshops, is responsible recreating is one of their workshops.
Yeah, it'd be good to just get our people in there to make sure that we have like some.
I think, I think it's a great idea.
Do you happen to know if, uh, their event registration includes camping at Osta?
I'm.
Or is it an additional fee for?
It's an additional fee that will be paid directly to Osta.
Okay. All right, I almost wonder if it'd be worth just encouraging them to combine it so that people are encouraged to kind of stay at Osta and not go.
It's part of their registration that they could pick it, so there'll be a spreadsheet that will be made if they pick it, because it's clearly cheaper to stay at Osta. And then one of my staff will be down at their registration area handing out camping tags.
What, what's the per, per night, uh, fee at Osta for these campers?
It's thirty, it's thirty dollars to try camping.
Okay.
These are like these couple hundred thousand dollar Mercedes Sprinter.
I know, I just.
Sarah, what I'm saying is, I don't think they take, I don't think they actually go off the page.
Well, I encountered, yeah, I think it's many things. So, oh, the overlanding thing is like those vans, but it's also like those vans towing two motorcycles and their e-bikes. And it's those, like, uh, it's a Jeep coming with some, those pop-up tents on top, and so like, so it's a big catch-all for.
Okay, gotcha.
For camping.
I don't know this world. I don't know.
Yeah, I actually plan on.
I appreciate your research.
Any other, uh, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. I have a motion on the table by Commissioner McGann and a second by, uh, Commissioner Dean. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes four to two with Commissioners Clapper and Stock opposed. Thanks Angie. Looks like you're, uh, off the hook now.
For, for a moment.
All right.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Uh, we're on to item eleven J, uh, adopting resolution approving the final plat, All American Acre Subdivision, Lot Five amended, located at forty-five hundred Easy Street. Alisa Martin is planning and zoning. Hi, Alisa.
Hi.
Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Okay, I'm gonna share my screen just briefly. This is just a vicinity one. For this, um, the applicant Boom Voyage LLC is seeking approval of a plat amendment for property located at forty-five hundred Easy Street in the rural residential zone. The plat amendment would subdivide one fa- five-acre five-acre lot into four parcels ranging in size from one acre to one point forty-one acres, and includes the construction of a private access track for the two rear parcels, five C and five D. Currently, two dwelling units exist on the property along with one accessory dwelling unit and one accessory structure. No roadway improvements will be required and no right-of-way dedication will be needed. The county engineer has approved the civil plans for infrastructure, road improvements, and drainage, which includes individual, individual drainage facilities on each lot. All utility easements required are shown on the final plat and approved by the Engineer and Grandwater Sewer Service Association Administration. I'm not sure what, that might be wrong. Each having provided a letter of acceptance. The proposed subdivision is in conformance with the twenty-thirty general plan future land use section insofar as providing opportunities for housing and being consistent with the minimum density of the rural residential future land use designation, which calls for one unit per acre. The proposed subdivision is in conformance with Grand County Land Use Code Article Five, Lot Design Standards, Article Seven Subdivision Standards, Article Nine Administration and Procedure, and staff recommends approval of the All American Acres Plat Amendment. If there's any questions? Please answer.
Questions for Alisa? Anyone care to make a motion?
I move to approve the finding of facts set forth in the staff report dated May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, and proposed resolution approving the final plat of the All American Acre Subdivision. Lot Five amended with the following condition: The owner shall record the SIA and the CCRs simultaneously with the final plat in the recorder's office, and the owner shall submit an acceptable completion assurance bond for the public improvement in infrastructure as established in the SIA out to the county and in the amounts set forth in the SIA prior to the recording of the final plat. Is that how you say that?
Recording. So, sounds right.
It's a new word.
I have a motion by, uh, Commissioner McGann.
Sorry.
Second by Commissioner Clapper. Discussion?
I, I'm just gonna make a comment. This is directly across from me, and, and that's, this is what's happening out there. It is what it is, I, you know, um. I am gonna make a statement specifically about this LLC. They have had it, there is a huge amount of commercial activity coming out of that property, and they've had some complaints filed against them, and so I hope once we now have to split it up, and now there's gonna be more, you know, that's a, you're now adding quite a bit of additional use to that five acres, that the commercial activity is gonna stop. It's a rural residential zone, period. And so when I say a lot, I'm talking about probably twenty commercial vehicles coming out of that lot a day, in and out. And it's not a commercial zone, and that's all I'm gonna say. I've, I'm, it's, I'm struggling with it, you know? It's, it is what it is, it, it, but, um, that little street has taken a lot of impact over the last couple of years, and so the addition of commercial traffic, it's, it's just, it's just, we just can't have it. So I'm just kind of, hopefully, the owner is listening when I say that. Oh, my, I can't stress that enough, like, it's a, it's a rural residential zone, so.
Thank you, Trish.
But I, I'm not gonna vote on this, because but I'm gonna make a comment. You're like, oh, sure.
All right, any other, uh, comments or discussion? All right, any other, uh, comments or discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote. Um, all those in, let's see, I have a motion on the table by, uh, Mary and a second by Evan. All those in favor of the motion, uh, raise your hand. All those opposed.
I'm abstaining.
Okay, okay. So the motion passes unanimously, five to nothing with Commissioner Hedin abstaining. And we are on to item eleven K, adopting a resolution to initiate proceedings to amend the Grand County Land Use Code to require new developments to provide a percentage of workforce housing or fees in lieu. Alyssa.
Thank you. What you have before you now is a pending ordinance resolution, which is authorized under Utah State Code Section seventeen dash twenty-seven A dash five zero eight. Essentially, this POR provides the commission with the ability to take the time needed to address compelling issues of public interest, such as the workforce housing shortage, where changes or updates to the land use code are needed. As a result of this POR, new development applications will be subject to discretionary approval by the commission based on whether or not the development is in alignment with a future land use code update that would require new development to provide a certain percentage of workforce housing or a fee in lieu. This has been a collaborative, collaborative effort over the past several months to research the facts on the ground, which support the need for the POR and also to develop a multifaceted approach to resolving the dire housing situation. This includes the issuing of an RFP for a housing nexus study to support the land use code update later this year. In our research, we found that the Moab's, no, the Moab area's median home listing price in June was seven hundred and ninety-two thousand. And the median home sales price as of May twenty twenty-two was six hundred and ninety-four thousand, which is unattainable by the annual household median income of fifty-two thousand. Of the approximately four thousand five hundred and seventy-six residential units in the county and city combined, twenty-five percent of those are second homes and the market value of secondary residences is almost double the market of pre- value of primary residences, according to county tax assessor data. One of the most significant causes for the increase in the market value of homes in Grand County is the purchasing of second homes by non-locals or institutional investors who do not live or work in the county and can therefore afford to outbid the average local resident and drive up the market value of homes. According to a survey conducted by the Grand County Economic Development Department in two thousand and twenty-one, eighty-two percent of employers reported the lack of attainable housing limited, that the lack of attainable housing limited their ability to fully staff their company and sixty-five percent reported having lost employees due to the housing shortage. The Moab Valley Multicultural Center reports the number of people they serve who meet HUD homeless program definitions for homelessness, diversion, emergency shelter, homelessness prevention, rapid rehousing and drop-in services is a hundred and sixty-five adults and ninety-eight children year to date. The MVMC also reported that between nine, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one, the number of clients they serve who are at risk more than doubled and the amount of direct service hours tripled. The intent behind the study and the land use code update is to increase the supply of workforce housing for locals, strengthen the local economy and overall vitality of the community. Our staff and I know other county departments as well are fully committed to working with the local real estate and home building community to ensure that new requirements for workforce housing do not hinder development or home construction. And my hope is that in working together to find the right balance, these changes may actually enhance the overall health of these economic drivers. Our dependent, our department plans to hold town halls to invite the development community for feedback once the housing study is complete and before any land use code updates occur.
That was an excellent summary.
Yeah, that was.
Thank you. Thanks for doing. I know you did a lot of homework for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I, I was actually going to read through the resolution, um, just because I think it is so important to emphasize those reasons that we're bringing this up. But, uh, I think you hit all.
I hit some of them. I didn't, I didn't take all of them, um, into this, but yeah.
Definitely hit most, most of the important points. But the fact is, we do have a, a huge workforce housing shortage here and it's affecting, um, our businesses and, and the town greatly, so.
And this is just a preliminary step that allows us to slow down while we consider how to better address workforce housing on, on our land use. And I think it's real important and we need to move forward and work closely with the Utah uh, Property Rights Coalition. And plus, we need to work closely with our local builders and our realtors because they're the ones that are, you know, are bested and have the most, you know, that could be impacted by anything we do. So we need to work with them and make sure that what we do is, you know, that we can come up with something that, that's, that's amenable to everybody that helps. And it, and it addresses the problem that we are facing. I mean, I couldn't believe it. What did you say? I even wrote it down. A hundred and forty-four homeless?
That was, um, those being served in this last.
Being served in June. Fifty-seven, excuse me, fifty-seven homeless and twelve of those are youth. That just breaks my heart. I mean, that just gives me shivers because I was on the homeless committee before and, and it was big, but we were staying in the twenties and that's just two years ago. And we doubled our homeless population. It's, it's, it's a huge issue. And I know, you know, everybody recognizes it and I'm sure that the realtors and the, um, local builders and such will come to the table and recognize that we need to work together to solve this crisis.
Well, the reality is, as a contractor, yeah, it's nice to build some huge home and, and, you know, make a higher margin. But if you don't have any workers to help you build that home, I mean, I think it'll be great to bring people to the table because I think we're going to hear, hear a spectrum of comments that will help us make decisions.
Yeah, the lack, the lack of workforce housing affects everybody.
Yeah, absolutely.
Everybody.
Yep, and it's, and it's a social issue that we need to address.
You, you've done a lot of work on this and it's greatly appreciated.
I had, I had a lot of people, you know, um, that I was collaborating with, so it's not all me.
Evan?
Uh, did you say you wanted to read the resolution?
She read a little.
She read, uh, quite a bit of it, but I, I think it might be important to read the resolution. Oh, and I'll start, actually, I'll go, there's quite a bit of code stuff. I'll start where it gets into, uh, some of the reasons for that. Um, so that's actually on page two, the second item down. Uh, whereas the county partnered with the City of Moab in twenty eighteen to conduct Moab Area Assured Housing Economic Feasibility Report and Economic Nexus Analysis, which formed the basis for an LUC update establishing section six point one four, affordable housing and six point one five assured housing sections of the code. Whereas the cost of housing has become increasingly unaffordable as the median home listing price was seven hundred ninety-two thousand in June of this year, trending up eighty-five point five percent year over year. And the median home sales price as of May of this year is six hundred and ninety-four thousand, which is completely unattainable by the annual household median income of fifty-two thousand. Uh, whereas of approximately four thousand five hundred seventy-six residential units in the county and city combined, twenty-five percent of those are second homes. And the market value of secondary residences is almost double the market value of primary residences, according to our county tax assessor data. Uh, whereas one of the most significant causes of the increase in the market value of homes in Grand County is the purchasing of second homes by non-locals or institutional investors who do not live or work in Grand County and can therefore afford to outbid the average local resident and drive up the market value of homes. Whereas the Grand County Planning and Zoning Department has received numerous applications or inquiries for rezones on property that would result in higher finished market units or homes for the secondary market that are unaffordable for the Grand County workforce. Whereas there are many parcels in Grand County that are underutilized and entitled through current zoning for subdivision and such properties are at risk of being sold to developers who intend to subdivide the land and sell market rate units that are not attainable by our local workforce. Whereas out of two hundred and ninety-three known rental units excluding senior housing in the Moab Valley, only seven are currently available to rent. And out of those five or three-bedroom homes averaging in, uh, rental rate of four thousand per month. And currently, there are at least fifty residents on waitlists for various apartment complexes. Whereas the supply of rental units available for workforce housing are at an all-time low. Whereas the Moab Valley Multicultural Center reports the number of people they serve who meet HUD homeless program definitions for homelessness, diversion, emergency shelter, homelessness prevention, rapid rehousing and drop-in services is one hundred and sixty-five adults and ninety-eight children year to date. Whereas the lack of attainable housing can result in homelessness, undesirable living conditions, lack of funds available for other basic needs and a decrease in the quality of life for Grand County workers and their families. Whereas according to a survey, a survey conducted by the Grand County Economic Development Department in two thousand and twenty-one, eighty-two percent of employers reported the lack of attainable housing limited their ability to fully staff their company and sixty-five percent reported having lost employees due to the housing shortage. Whereas many employers in Grand County are unable to hire and retain employees because of the lack of attainable workforce housing. Whereas the county has initiated an update to the Assured Housing Economic Nexus Analysis to study the nexus between new development and increased demand for workforce housing. Whereas this process is one of the many strategies being considered by the county to address the community workforce housing and affordable housing needs. And whereas the county is actively pursuing programs to incentivize the provision of affordable housing and workforce housing by partnering with various county departments and local organizations, such as the Grand County Economic Development Department, the Housing Authority of Southeast Utah and the Moab Area Community Land Trust. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Grand County Commission hereby formally initiate proceedings to amend Articles Six, Seven and Nine of the Grand County Land Use Code, including but not limited to land use code Article Seven Subdivision Standards, Section six point one four, Affordable Housing, Section six point one five Assured Housing, Section nine point two Text and Zoning Map Amendments, Section nine point one six Site Plan Review to require workforce housing or fees in lieu of for all new land use applicants with the following exceptions, minor subdivisions and any land use application for the primary purpose of providing public education, nonprofit churches, childcare, small business employing five or fewer employees. Housing for actively employed households is defined in the Land Use Code, Section four point seven. Housing for low-income households, very low-income housing, uh, households, I mean, sorry, very low-income households or extremely low-income households is defined in LUC Section six point one five or affordable housing is defined in LUC Article ten. That was long, but I think it was important to read the whole thing and, um, let people know where we're coming from. And again, emphasize that, um, uh, this is not a moratorium and we are extremely interested and will be reaching out to, to the PRC and other, um, other entities going forward.
Before you guys get a motion.
Uh, yes, Christina?
Well, before y'all get a motion, we updated the resolution that Jacques just did a great job, um, reading, uh, today. So the, the version in the packet is current for anyone looking from home. Um, we did not update your suggested motion and then gender summary. So if you like the resolution as Jacques just presented it, then you would just move to approve um, the initiation of formal proceedings and everything that came behind that in that resolution section. And, you know, those exceptions obviously are allowing our affordable and workforce housing. For the extent we have it already integrated, um, in some other smaller development projects, but you could also propose an amendment in your motion.
Thank you, Christina. Anyone want to try to take that on?
I was getting ready to, now I'm confused.
That was just, uh, bullet one in the possible motions.
No, it needs to be the whole resolution section that Jacques just read. So I move to formally initiate proceedings. You can shortcut that, you know, the LUC amendment.
Could we say I move to approve, uh, the proposed, uh, resolution as recently read by our county chair?
Sure.
Commissioner.
Yes, let's do it that way.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, a motion on the table by Commissioner McGann and a second by Commissioner Hedin. Uh, further discussion on this.
I just want to underscore what everybody else has already said and Jacques, I'm so glad that you reread those points because I think for me, those, um, the kind of stats that are embedded in the resolution are so helpful in, uh, giving a factual reference for something that is so felt by people that live in this community and especially people who have lived here long enough to remember when this kind of housing crisis felt unheard of in Moab, even though it was occurring in so many other places. And having witnessed it in places in Colorado and having lived in the Bay Area, I think it is important that we get ahead of this before it gets even worse because I, I know how much worse it gets in other places and we always seem to be just a little bit behind other places. It doesn't mean we're not going to get there. We're just going to get there a little slower. So we have the benefit of getting ahead of this in the way that a lot of other communities don't and in some ways we should have already. Um, but I think haste is absolutely essential, um, in ameliorating this. Uh, and I do hope that this is a non-controversial, um, place for all sort of involved parties, including, um, developers and builders and everyone involved in housing to just recognize, uh, the boat that we are all collectively in and really find a good consensus around this.
Thank you, Josie. Anyone else have something they'd like to, to add to that?
I would like to jump in and, and Elise should take over or Trish or Josie, who have a lot of experience with the Planning Commission, to also talk about the fact that this is only one little piece and, you know, solutions we're looking at. We're not looking at builders to solve the housing crisis. Um, you know, we have our high-density housing ordinance, which we are looking to expand. We're really close to getting fully beyond the litigation that has bogged us down for quite some time. That is obviously a slightly different structure with density bonuses at stake, but we've talked about that we're close to expanding that. We're looking at a long-term residential, um, camping zone of sorts that would allow RVs and vans, as well as tiny cabins, tiny homes. Um, there, I know that August is looking into as an economic diversification tool to potentially um, buy existing housing stock, implement a deed restriction to reduce value and then resell it to locals and local workforce. Um, we've also looked at other sort of cash incentive, um, buying programs that possibly the county could get involved in. At least jump in, um, if I'm missing anything, but, you know, we're working on, on all of it from all directions and this is one piece.
I think that you've kind of covered it. Where those are all the current kind of projects that we have in mind or initiatives, um, that we're moving forward with at the Planning Commission right now. And, um, yeah, it, the, the housing study is, uh, it, it, it includes, kind of the scope of it goes way beyond just looking at, um, this one aspect of requiring workforce housing in new development. So, um, there's, there's also looking at some, uh, in, how we can increase our density bonusing, um, stuff in our land use code, like our policies that we currently have, but don't seem to be really effective. And so working on that and then, um, there are some other projects that the initiatives that the Economic Development Department wants to, uh, include in the study, which, um, you touched on one of them, which was the deed restriction, um, purchasing program. And then, um, they also have an idea for, um, purchase or incentivizing and, and assisting in construction of ADUs through some grant funding that they have. So that, so there's a lot going on. And, um, the housing study kind of tries to take a look at how they could all work together in hopefully solving the crisis.
Yeah, thank you, Elise. Crisis is a good word for it. Any other discussion? All right, I have a motion on the table, uh, by Mary and a second by Trish. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We are up to item, actually, it is after six and, uh, we're a little bit late for our second citizens to be heard session. So if there are any citizens in the chambers who would care to be heard, you can come up and speak. Looks like there aren't. Is there anyone on Zoom who? Looks like there aren't. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to make a comment? All right, looks like we don't have any citizens to be heard at this moment. We'll move on to item eleven L, Cota Rally Special Event Permit. Looks like August is presenting instead of Rachel, is that right?
I'm sub.
All right, thanks, August.
And I'll be camping here for the next couple of items. This is simpler than it looks in that we're, I'm requesting that we actually postpone this to the next commission meeting.
Okay.
Just trying to solve a couple of problems.
This is item L?
Yep, this is the the special event permit.
You want it postponed?
That's what I would recommend.
Okay.
To the, to a certain date or just till the next meeting?
Till the next meeting. Whatever.
Sometime, well.
Is there a difference between tabling and postponing?
Tabling, it means we get back to it at this meeting, whereas postponing it means it would come up at a future meeting.
It could be a future meeting, we're aiming for the next meeting.
Okay.
I move that we postpone item L, Cota Rally Special Event Permit until our we have, is prepared and ready to be presented.
Thank you, Mary.
I'll second that.
All right, discussion. Call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands, say aye. Motion passes unanimously. That will be postponed to a future meeting. Thanks, August. On to item M, Approval of the Revised Special Event Grant Guidelines. August Granath, Director of Grand County Economic Development. So please this. As well as Ben Alter, Specialist Grand County Economic Development.
Okay, so this is the second time I'm bringing a revision of the Special Event Grant Guidelines to the County Commission. And last time, that was due to ensuring that the guidelines would allow us to disperse grants that the Travel Council had, I should say, the Travel Council Advisory Board had recommended for dispersions. That was the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two Folk Fest and the two thousand twenty-two Free Concert Series. This time around, we're setting ourselves up to be able to disperse the balance of funds in that grant account this year. So there's eighteen thousand three hundred available at the moment for two thousand twenty-two. And so we want to be able to get that out for event organizers coming around this fall as soon as possible. And then simultaneously set ourselves up to receive applications for next year's grant round by the end of August so that we can plan our budget accordingly during the budget process. A couple, let me let me pull up. I think the red line actually also includes some of the changes from last time, if I'm not mistaken. A lot of this is just for clarity, there's a couple of things that Rachel noticed that I didn't when I brought this last time. It still said Travel Council in certain places instead of Economic Development. Particularly elements and changes here. I guess there's a rubric, maybe that's the most relevant. And so part part of that was to provide a little bit more context to the scoring. Obviously, there's an ongoing conversation about how the county is managing special events. And so, you know, this is a longstanding program that we've been able to use to incentivize the creation of new events during times of year where we are wanting them and has had less focus on that type of event. And so we've included language in the rubric and in the guidelines to kind of help shape that and help encourage or at least create, you know, our piece once the kind of the the assessing out what exactly we're trying to focus on and when we're trying to get those things to happen is clarified that we're ready to, you know, amend whatever our guidelines are to be in lockstep with that. But you know, this is, this is the carrot, whereas the the permit process is the stick and so that, you know, we can balance out our special events calendar with both of those tools. We've gotten interests for this already for some events happening this fall on that I think would be a good fit. I won't speak to those at this time, I guess, because we have to go through the event grant process. But that's kind of it unless there's questions. So I assume there's questions.
You said you had eighteen thousand, I didn't catch that number.
Eighteen thousand three hundred budgeted and approved for two thousand twenty-two that have been unallocated.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, sir?
I, I am a little confused about, I understand your restructuring, which is great to make it make sense to you. But I was wondering, so I noticed in the red line version of this, it says a line was taken out that I liked, which was extensions will be considered for events that have considerable community benefit. And I noticed that the rationale was that it said, because this is paid for by TRT and that there'll be another, the other grant that we have is for the community benefit thing. And I just wondered, like, couldn't we just leave that in because since it is paid for by TRT, but we could still incentivize it being a community benefit?
Sure, yeah, I think that's, it's actually, if you go to the, realizing on the rubric, community orientation and and this, the the weighting can be changed in many of the elements in the rubric.
Oh, right, it is in the rubric.
So so we can certainly like on red line that section and you could make that a part of a motion.
Well, like what you're saying is it's actually reflected, reflected in the rubric?
Yes, in the rubric, it says that our community orientation, quote, does it provide a benefit to the community? Is there documented expressed or evident desire within the community for this event and for life programming up to ten points during the scoring?
Yeah, that's fine then.
Do you have any, I mean, you put the rubric together.
I'm trying to decide who's blue and who's red.
Like, who are these people?
I don't know if I want to own up to certain edits, but.
That might have been, that might have been my call.
Well, in in general, mostly editing I did was not removing content, but removing it where where it didn't make sense with any of the documents. But we tried to capture the scope in a more succinct way with that rubric. I'd like to think that that speaks better for itself and.
That makes sense to me.
A few months ago, we brought the proposals for the grants that we're currently working within the community to end the application period in July for the STAR and the Moab Business Grants. And our goal is to redo these templates so that it looks like that because that was a lot more comprehensive and this was prepared sort of in the template that the last grant guidelines were for. But I've already received some input from the community that there are a few places where it's still a little unclear. So I think that our hope was to bring this so that we could get the program running as soon as possible and disperse those funds. But the document itself definitely is some work.
He he was trying to throw somebody else under the bus there, did you see that? Those were her edits.
You know, I I think, I think I'm the red, so, yeah, you know.
And all on the blue for the sake of.
No.
Well, so I guess.
I own it all.
Looking at.
The blue and the red.
Looking at the red line version now, I pulled it up, so we're talking about under criteria number one.
Yeah.
And this is, so this is talking about the time of year that the event is happening.
I, that, so that criteria is actually, so it says, I'll just read that section, that's okay. So criteria number one. This grant aims to support events that will exceed more than one day in duration and encourages out-of-area visitors primarily during targeted low visitation periods of the year. What's redlined is exemptions will be considered for events that provide considerable community benefit. So now that I'm reading that in context, I did recommend that we strike that. And the reason being is that in the past, and I think even, I think we added this to the last revisions so that we could fund the Free Concert Series, right? Which is not a visitation inducing event, it's pretty much community benefit oriented. And rather than having, you know, the program having like, well, we kind of do this thing, we kind of do this thing, just kind of depending on how I feel like it. Having two separate programs, just two separate funding streams that are, you know, statutorily clear.
Right.
One that is here are, this is targeted towards inducing visitation during target low visitation period of the year. And this is explicitly trying to create community benefit. So expanding that program to create, you know, more concert series dates during the summer or other like events. And so, so this is, this is, this was, I think I added it and not taking it out. So it doesn't say that we're not going to consider community benefit as a factor in the scoring of the Special Event Grant Process.
It's talking about the timing.
Even like the type, really, like.
I see one, like, the concert series, that makes sense to me, that that's not really bringing people in from outside, but something like the powwow, which is actually bringing people from like hundreds of miles regionally. I could see applying for TRT funds.
Absolutely.
But they couldn't because it's not a low visitation time of year. Unless you include that exemption.
Or we include, I'm I'm fairly sure, my intention was to create flexibility in this to address that very issue.
Okay.
So if that's not clear, then that's on me. Maybe it's written somewhere else, I'm gonna try to see if I can find it.
Yeah, I I mean, I like what you guys are doing, making it really clear, like this, these are the grants for community benefit. This is the, what used to be the advertising grant. I just think that when we're spending TRT money, we may as well leave our doors a little bit more open to
Yeah.
to be able to spend it a little.
No, definitely. So so I should say, so looking here at the, at the structure, that that line, this is primarily during target low visitation periods of year. So it's, it's not excluding, okay, this is during a busy year time of year, but we think this is a event we really want to support and we will support it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Good question.
Sorry, everybody.
I appreciate it.
All right, any other questions or discussion? Or would anyone like to make a motion?
I move to approve the community, or not the community, I move to approve the Special Events Grant Guidelines. Special Event Guidelines.
Uh, the special.
The Grand County Special Event Grant, I move to approve.
Thank you, Sarah. Any, any other discussion?
I'm staying out of this.
Motion by Sarah, second by Evan. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And we're on to item N, Approval of the Community Event Grant Program. And back to August and Ben.
Awesome. So this is, we were alluding to this in the past session, but we haven't had a event, like, community event grant before. We've only had the Special Event Grant and it's kind of been a little loosey-goosey in terms of, we'll make exceptions for this because we think it's good. Whereas, you know, we we basically, we have funding in two different sections of TRT. The previous one that was just approved comes out of Establish and Promote. So, you know, explicitly focusing on that, you know, visitation inducement effect, the context of which we can decide what we're looking for. But this is coming out of the Recreation Film and Conventions line, we've got forty thousand this year. Very generic account description, basically establishing Recreation Film or Convention, like, resources and activities, because there were some things I was thinking of, but I couldn't, didn't nail it down. And and I think it's making, it's seeming increasingly clear that this, that should be used for supporting and developing community events that serve as recreational opportunities for anyone. It's not excluding visitors, but it's not necessarily strategically trying to bring people for a given weekend. So I think the Free Concert Series is what this was designed in context for. We approved sixteen thousand seven hundred to them last year out of the Special Event Grant Fund. And going forward, you know, having a slightly larger pot with a slightly more dedicated focus targeting those types of events and or others that provide general community benefit, you know, for July fourth or the Christmas Parade, all those kinds of things where, you know, not only are we providing kind of a better community experience, but we're kind of able to communicate the value of the county, our office, you know, the good side of what tours and dollars we bring into the community and try to kind of communicate that in a way where people are having a good time, living in their town and proud of it. And so that's, that's where this came from. It's it's very similar. We just, we pulled the Special Event Grant Guidelines and amended it to kind of have that community focus. There's slightly different scoring criteria. And I'm happy to go through that. So we probably solicit applications during the same period. If you're reviewed by the Travel Council Advisory Board, I think it's a good opportunity for them to be involved in making some decisions rather than, you know, just approving the budget. They've done this over time. Obviously, they don't have the final say, but it's been a really good process in the past. And yeah, that's kind of my high-level summary. Any questions? I take them.
Anyone have a?
Sounds good, I like it. I would move to approve the Community Event Grant Program.
Thanks, Evan.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Clapper and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion. Motion passes unanimously. And up to Agenda Item N, Approval of one hundred thousand dollar grant for Moab Community Childcare. August and Ben.
Starting, I should note fiscal impact here should be hundred thousand dollars. But
How much?
Is a hundred thousand dollars. So it just didn't, it says none in the agenda summary. I just noticed that. So the money's not coming out of there. Well, it's coming from the state's grant. I'm just gonna read the background on this because it's a little bit more detail. And have Ben fill in if I miss anything. So the Grand County Economic Development Advisory Board is tasked with determining how funds from the Rural County Grants are spent in Grand County as codified in Utah State Bill ninety-five Economic Development Amendments. In recent board meetings, the EDAB has highlighted childcare as an economic development priority in Grand County. The Grand County Economic Development Department and members of this board have conducted roundtables and worked within the community to determine how to support existing childcare providers and incentivize the creation of others. Local nonprofit Moab Community Childcare has presented a funding proposal to this board that will effectively address the childcare concerns stated above, has begun doing so already. The board workshops the proposal over the course of numerous meetings and recently voted in favor of awarding the Moab Community Childcare's request of a hundred thousand dollars for funds provided by the Rural County Grant Part A Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-two award. Of note, the Board Chair of Moab Community Childcare, Rob Walker, who's with us today, also serves on the Economic Development Advisory Board. He has worked closely with the Economic Development Advisory Board and our office diligently within the Grand County community and diligently within the Grand County community. As a board member of the Community of Moab Community Childcare, is assured both EDAB and our office that he stands to make no financial gains to reward these funds. The proposal is attached as well as a summary of our current allocation for all of the Rural County Grant funding and a contract between Grand County and Moab Community Childcare that has been vetted and approved by the attorney.
Any questions? Thanks, August. Any questions for August? Thanks for your work on this, August. I think this is important and Rob and Ben as well.
Yeah, kudos to Rob, he's really taking the lead on this. We don't really have a chair for EDAB at the moment, but he's really kind of de facto stepped into that role. And his, his push has has made those roundtables as effective as they were in bringing together existing providers and figuring out what exactly are the needs of childcare providers who are already on the ground. So I'm, we're really excited about this. There's huge buy-in from the board. And he's been very open every step of the way to making this the right proposal.
Um, I have one question. I'm reading through the grant again. I was wondering.
Grant proposal document.
Grant proposal document.
Sure.
In support for existing providers, it seems like the main solution is to do the Helping Hands thing, which is an awesome innovative approach. That's great. Does that also include any facilities upgrades for existing? Rob is nodding back there.
Do you want to speak to that at all? You know this proposal better.
Do you wanna, do you wanna come forward, Rob?
I thought I saw that, but now I'm, I can't find it again, so I was just wanting clarification.
Okay, on here. Under Support for Existing Providers, Section one. The amount allocated was five thousand dollars for that, which we would do one thousand dollar grants, matching grants. There's a lot of, there were some demand that was pretty substantial, one facility had some major renovations that I think would be good, but there would be, you know, ten thousand dollars. So we decided to prioritize Helping Hands over larger one-time single payments because, you know, Helping Hands program, you know, builds capacity of the organization to. because, you know, helping hands program, you know, builds capacity of the organization to, to, you know, there's opportunities where, you know, we can help them with different grants, like the quality grant you talked about, versus just if we just kind of redistribute the money right away to providers. So, yeah, five thousand dollars would be, would be for that.
Okay.
I might have, I'm trying to find the line where it's very happened. Okay, that's the top of the page. Page four. Just pull over the testimonials. So it says, we would also like to provide some financial assistance to providers to help encourage them to make upgrades to their facilities. Most allocate five thousand dollars for fifty-fifty matching grants. Our board will vote on which proposed investments are most impactful.
Okay. I mean, I was a little concerned about just like granting this to one entity and letting you guys decide what to do. And we, and then we have ten existing providers, but it looks like a really good plan. And I, I don't know, I have, I have trust that this will play out in a really good way. Um, and especially that piece where you say that you'll maybe help with grants to do some more of those capital improvements. I know I've just heard specifically from a few providers that some extra money itself would be helpful. But it sounds like you're addressing all those issues.
Yeah, and I think, I would, I think one thing that's been really cool about this experience, just having the roundtables with the existing providers, coming in with the assumption that the goal would be to increase supply most directly, and then coming out of those conversations, realizing that we need to make sure that existing providers are cared for, care about, feel supported, and are not burning out. Uh, it's way easier to lose spots than to gain spots, especially sustainably. And, and so I think Rob kind of came into this, my understanding, correct if I'm wrong, that Moab Community Childcare is primarily just going to be another provider. But I think recognizing that strategically, you know, in addition to being a provider, can, can sort, serve as a kind of administrative hub for the community at large, help to connect the various needs, um, to the suppliers of those needs. And that's been the most exciting is, you know, helping to find that grant for that person and helping walk through those financials and connecting the community rather than having a bunch of isolated nodes, doing the same thing without talking to each other.
Yeah, I mean, our, our mission is, I mean, if you sum it up in a few words, it's supporting the entire ecosystem of childcare. So, um, in different ways, with, um, you know, professional and non-professional type, kind of like consulting services are actually just on the ground. And then in terms of, um, the amount of, for the matching grants, I'd say, you know, I think the M V we're gonna sign, you know, we'll see, we're not, this is, these are new programs, helping hands programs, so if all those hours aren't utilized, those are subsidized hours, then we, and there's more demand for the matching grants. And that's what, you know, August's department, and you all want us to prioritize more, we certainly could do that. And one of our thoughts was we could even, you know, have, you know, host an event, which would be like a fundraiser for particular projects that we could kind of like organize for that provider. You get kind of, um, like a fundraiser just for their issue, you know, if one in particular that's very large. That would be potentially good.
Well, thank you all for your work on these, all these grants.
Yes, thank you very much. This is very exciting. And I, I do think one of the most exciting parts about it is that roundtable, that that came together and really helped drive and helped people decide how to move forward to support what we already have while we enhance and create more. Thank you. Kudos. I mean, this is really, really exciting.
Thanks for all your support.
All right, anyone care to make a motion? Mary?
I move to approve the grant award one hundred thousand for Moab Community Childcare. I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion by Mary and a second by Trish. Any further discussion?
No, just once again, thanks all you guys for what you're doing. It's great.
All right, call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Aye. Passes unanimously. And thanks, Rob. We are up to item P, appointment of three individuals to the Economic Development Advisory Board, again, August Ben.
Uh, so this is the last of our stay this evening. Uh, Mary spoke to us earlier, um, how busy we kept her with interviews. We had an initial kind of attempt at, uh, filling these positions, had some interviews. They went well, but we, it was brought up that we wanted to try and give it a little bit more recruiting effort and try to expand the representation on the board, uh, really focus on trying to attract people with long-term communities to this community, and maybe folks who have seen past economic development efforts come and go, um, folks from the workforce, uh, as well as folks of color, um, who we didn't have represented. So with that in mind, you know, we sent out some emails, moved to the chamber, um, and it was those various communicators led us to get total of, let me get the number, eleven applicants. Uh, and we had to, we just cracked the stutter start scheduling and things that happened over three different meetings. But we did do the interviews. They went well. And we conferred last week. And, uh, the board voted on recommending that the county commission, uh, appoint Forrest Rogers, who's the director of the museum, to a position of member of the public who lives in the county. And, uh, Hussein Dennis and Karen Guzman Newton as representatives, as private sector representatives. Hussein Dennis goes by Dennis, and he runs Cafe Italiano among other local businesses. He's a super excited local entrepreneur. And Karen has been on the city council, uh, involved in the chamber, and is the co-owner of Golden Spider. So those are, those are who the board recommended for appointment.
Yeah, Mary?
I move to appoint Karen Guzman Newton, Hussein Dennis, and Forrest Rogers to the Economic Development Advisory Board.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion by Mary and a second by Trish. Um, how, how long are the appointments for?
Um, I believe it's two years. I maybe I didn't think that clear. Yeah, they're, I believe it's two years.
They are two years. Okay, great. Thanks. All right, any further discussion?
I'm hoping to jump in. I'm not quite sure how to deal with this, but one of these candidates, we've had numerous criminal cases against, including convictions and appeals. I think to freely discuss it, we'd need to go into closed session. I didn't realize one of these folks was recommended to join one of our boards.
I make a motion, we go into closed session to discuss character and competency of an individual.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor of the motion? All right, we can, uh, go into closed session.
Do we want to do that now, or should we postpone this item until?
We could do that. That might be the best thing.
I was telling you it would be great, and then I'll get some ducks in a row for you.
Okay, so I withdraw my, uh, previous motion and move to postpone this most, this, uh, agenda to item until after consent agendas.
I think to, uh, it might be nice to have some background prepared, so maybe.
After the public hearing?
Or to the next meeting. Is there, is this sensitive to get this board filled time-wise?
Um, we, the goal here was to get, um, our, our next board meeting's next Wednesday. And so the goal was to get this fully, uh, I mean, just worded up, so that we could have, there was a number of things.
Christina, if we postponed it until after the public hearing, would that give you time?
Yeah, that's, yeah, either after consent or a public hearing. You can do either one.
Okay.
Let's do public hearings since that's when we normally have our closed session.
Okay.
I make a motion to move, uh, this agenda item to, uh, after our public hearing.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. So we will postpone, uh, agenda item P until after our, uh, after our public hearing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to our consent agenda. Uh, item A, approval of Moab Craig and Classic Local Consent. Uh, item B, proposed purchase of Civic Clerk from Civic Plus. Item C, approval of independent contractor agreement with Guerrero Construction. Item D, proposed agreement between Grand County and the Utah Department of Natural Resources, Division of Wildlife Resources, underwater shed restoration initiative project number five-nine-three-eight Mill Creek Partnership Three. Item E, proposed agreement between Grand County and the Utah Department of Natural Resources, Division of Wildlife Resources, underwater shed and restoration initiative project number five-nine-six-eight Dolores River Restoration Six Point O. Uh, and item F, proposed agreement between Grand County and the Utah Department of Natural Resources, forestry fire and state lands. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Trish.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Trish, second by Sarah. Any discussion?
I will be abstaining because of my relationship with the American Alpine Club.
Thanks, Evan. All right, call for a vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, raise your hand, say aye. All opposed.
You can abstain and then raise your hand.
Uh, motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Clapper abstaining. And we are on to our public hearing. Item fourteen A, public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving amended planned unit development master plan for the Arroyo Crossing Development. And is Alisa on Zoom?
So she was coming from her office.
She can hear us. You can hear us.
Thanks, Alisa.
So this, um, application, public hearing is for considering a amendment to the Arroyo Crossing Planned Unit Development Master Plan. And it's a very simple change that they're making. Um, it just basically clarifies the housing typology. It also kind of clarifies for us, as we're doing our review for the new development that's coming forward, the setbacks, which were a little bit off previously in the master plan. So um, basically the, uh, originally there were duplexes, and the duplexes didn't really make sense for this project. So what they really intended to be were two townhouses, because they actually do have a parcel boundary going through the, um, the townhouse units. So I think it was just a basic mistake when they, um, put together their typologies. So the duplexes are going away. Um, they're all townhomes now, except for, of course, we have the single family, um, which totals sixty-four units, and then the cottages are, there's twenty-four of those, and the apartments. So those are all staying the same. And that's basically it. It's really simple. It's just kind of a, it's unfortunate we had to go through this whole public hearing just to kind of amend the master plan for this, but hopefully it'll be the last time we have to do that.
All right, thanks, Alisa. Any questions for Alisa before I open the public hearing? All right, seeing none, I will open the, uh, public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving amended planned unit development master plan for the Arroyo Crossing Development. Comments can be made publicly now or by submitting them to on the county webpage or emailing, uh, the commission. Um, and the public hearing will remain open until Wednesday, the twenty-seventh at five P M. Yes?
I would, I have a question. There's been so many hurdles and so many times that we have been delayed in this process. Is this timely?
To keep the public hearing open? Is that what you mean?
No, I mean, if it's timely, with a two-thirds vote, we can move to suspend the rules. If it's not timely.
It is timely.
It is timely, okay.
Yes. So I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and, uh, vote on approving this ordinance tonight, or a final, uh, amendment to a final plan tonight. That's amendment to planned unit development master plan for Arroyo Crossing.
Thanks, Mary. All right, second by Evan. Um, motion by Mary, second by Evan, discussion?
Uh, it sounds like it's really just a definition and that it was made in error, that it doesn't change any of the underlying densities. And so I'm okay. Typically, I'm not a fan of suspending the rules.
I, I'm not at all.
No, this, this, this sounds like a kind of.
But I, if, and if they would have said, no, it's not timely, I wouldn't have suggested it. But this has been grueling.
Yeah.
Grueling to get off the ground, and if we can simplify it by passing it tonight, I'd like to do that.
Great, thanks. I have a motion on the table, um, to, uh, to vote on the or, I'm sorry, to suspend the public hearing and vote on the ordinance tonight. Um, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. All right, motion passes. So, um, uh, action item, adopting the ordinance approving amended planned unit development master plan for the Arroyo Crossing Development. Any discussion? All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
I move to adopt the ordinance approving the amended planned unit development, P U D, master plan for the Arroyo Crossing Planned Unit Development.
Thanks, Mary.
I'll second that.
All right, uh, motion to approve by Commissioner McGann, second by Commissioner Hadeen. Further discussion?
No, Sherry, I just want to thank you for all the work you've done on this. It's a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you. We're trying really hard.
Yeah.
It's like the universe is against us accomplishing this. Sometimes I felt like that. Oh, and it's, I, I drive by, I make a point to go down Bonnie's way to just, just, and then just to see it. I'm very excited. Well, I'm glad we.
Excellent. All right, um, all those in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Alisa. All right, we are on to our, our postponed agenda item.
Actually, wait, I haven't, we don't need to go into closed session. I freaked out when I heard the business name, but it's an association. It is not any of these people. So I withdraw my I have no issue. When these people has fifteen cases against that person, so.
Well, that would have been good, so.
Never mind. I apologize for the delay.
Well, we had a little excitement there.
Better safe than sorry.
Really embarrassing.
Sorry, sure.
Can you give us some other gossip? I'm just kidding.
No, don't make me talk.
Yeah.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve Karen Guzman Newton, Hussein Dennis, and Forrest Roger to the Economic Development Advisory Board.
Thanks, Mary.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mary and a second by Evan. Any further discussion of this? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving these board members. All right, motion passes unanimously, six to nothing. And with that, it looks like we've come to the end of our agenda, so.
Which is, that's gonna go down in the annals of our funny things that have happened in our meetings.
I will adjourn, uh, this July nineteenth, uh, Grand County Commission meeting. Thank you, guys.
Good job.